Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting during the summer months as City Council. I want to welcome everyone today, and we will begin the meeting with the singing of O Canada. As we don't have a choir, we collectively will be the choir this evening, so to ask, invite everyone, as they're able, to stand and join in the singing. Thank you. So it's been moved by Councillor Zyginetski that the minutes of the regular meeting held June 26, 2017, when the special meetings held June 26, August 11 and 21, as mailed to the Mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Okay, there being none. Unless otherwise directed, I shall refer the communications with respect to the flag request as listed on the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We will now move into Presentations, and we have a couple things before we get into the rest of the business of the organization today. But today is the final meeting for our current CAO, Jeff Wilmer. And Jeff, as you know from back in May, announced that he would be retiring effective August 31, 2017. Jeff had an impressive career with the city for almost three decades. That involved him being our intermediate planner, as well as our Director of Planning, becoming our interim General Manager of Development and Technical Services, Deputy CAO of Community Services, and ultimately was appointed CAO in May of 2012. Many of us have had many years of working with Jeff, whether it's been as a staff person, as an elected official, or in some instances, both. And I would think throughout all of that, Jeff always exhibited the utmost in commitment to public service, the utmost in integrity, and the utmost in professionalism. And with this being Jeff's final meeting, on behalf of all of us on council and staff, wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank you and acknowledge your years of service to us and to this community, Jeff. Thank you for the role you played in a variety of significant city-building initiatives over your years in the various roles that you had. And on behalf of City Council, and in fact, the entire corporation, wish you all the best in your retirement. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for a few words.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the council. This is a council that took a chance on me about five years ago. I was relatively unproven as a department head even at that point. So I'm grateful to you for giving me the opportunity and for showing confidence in the whole staff team with the decision to put me in the CAO role. It's been a real privilege to serve the citizens of Kitchener over the last many years. Kitchener has been my home for 30 years, and it's been exciting to see the progress that has been made in the community, the challenges that have been overcome. And it's one thing to have the privilege of public service, but it's another thing to get to see the fruits of staff labors and council labors coming to fruition in real time. So that's been a real treat for me. I'll be forever indebted to the staff team. It's been a, I've had great support from staff throughout the organization, and it's been a real team effort, and so I can't say enough about the terrific staff here at the city. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you very much, Jeff. And so while it's bittersweet in the sense that we're saying goodbye to Jeff today, earlier today, we also announced our new CAO. And when Jeff announces retirement back a number of months ago, we undertook a competition process together with the assistance of Margaret Campbell of Otgr's Bernstein and Michael Goldrup, our own Director of HR, with the hope of being in a position to announce Jeff's replacement prior to his retirement. And while it may have, it certainly is probably about as close as we can get, timing-wise, to that sort of, I guess, it being on Thursday itself, we were pleased earlier today to announce that our next CAO will be Mr. Dan Chapman, our Deputy CAO of Finance and Corporate Services. Dan comes to us with over 12 years of experience at the city of Kitchener. When council undertook the recruitment process, we undertook a consultation with both councils, senior leaders, and community partners with the help of our consultant, and identified a number of first-year priorities for the new CAO, which included a focus on employee culture and customer service, completing our infrastructure services review and staffing model, our focus on council communications, on community and stakeholder outreach, and finally, on economic development. Council also considered the importance of our people plan, our shared value of growing leadership within the organization, and recognizing the importance of promoting from within when possible. And after an extensive search that involved our successful candidate and several high-caliber external candidates, this morning, we announced that Dan was the successful individual. I think all of us will agree that over our years of working with Dan, he has brought a very thoughtful and considerate approach to his role at the city. He too exhibits the utmost in integrity and professionalism, and I am confident that, as I believe we all are, that Dan will do a phenomenal job for us in the new role. So this evening, we have to formally ratify what we dealt with in caucus, and so I would ask the clerk to actually put the motion that we need to deal with on the screen. But first, I need to call for a motion to dispense with notice in order to ratify the selection of the new CAO and introduce a bylaw for three readings. Can somebody move that? Moved by Councillor Fernandez, seconded, Councillor Zyginetski. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. And there's a motion on the screen that leave be given to the mover and seconded to introduce the following bylaws for three readings, and that the same be taken as read a first, second, and third times, be finally, should be passed, and numbered serially by the clerk. A being a bylaw to amend Chapter 101 of the City of Kitchener Municipal Code with respect to appointment of staff, and B being a bylaw to amend Chapter 115 of the City of Kitchener Municipal Code with respect to the corporate leadership team. Somebody want to move that? Councillor Galloway-Sealock, Councillor Davey, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And that too is carried unanimously. Congratulations, Dan. And I will now give you the floor to say a few words.
I'd like to start, Mayor Verbanovic, and council, to thank you for placing your confidence in me to be your next CAO. As the mayor mentioned, I've been privileged to spend the past 12 years building my career here at the city of Kitchener, and I'm fortunate for the support that you provided to me over the course of those 12 years. I'm immensely proud of the work that we do every day to serve the citizens of Kitchener, and I'm looking forward to taking on this new role, and I firmly believe in the mandate that you've set for me, and I'm committed to it, to move forward with that in my first year. But I'm also very mindful of the fact that my success or failure in the role will be influenced by a great extent by the quality of the larger team that is around me. And on that point, I couldn't be prouder to be associated with our team. Our staff are widely regarded for their expertise, professionalism, and dedication to the community. We enjoy a high level of trust within our organization, and altogether, these factors combine to create an environment where great things can happen. And so I look forward to working with my colleagues on the corporate leadership team to motivate and guide all 2,200 city employees to each do their part to achieve our shared vision of an innovative, caring, and vibrant Kitchener. I'd be remiss, as the mayor has also done, if I didn't acknowledge Jeff Wilmer for his leadership and for his example over the past five years. Jeff has served the community with distinction, but also modeled what it means to be a humble and a principled leader. So in closing, council, I'm aware that we have much to accomplish but are starting from a position of strength. Thank you again for your support and confidence, and for giving me this exciting opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Dan, for those comments, and I will just add to the council. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to speak with our corporate management team, which is brown, 30-ish people, and I can let you know that I, A, expressed to them our thanks, council's thanks, for the job that they do on a regular basis, and also our unanimous support of Dan in this new role. And they were, I think it would be fair to say that the feedback that I heard back from the staff team was very positive about council's selection, so I just wanted to share that as well. So we'll now move on to Item B under Presentations, and Mr. Dylan McMahon from the AMCTO Board of Directors, Zone 2. Welcome, Mr. McMahon.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Dylan McMahon, and I'm here today, very pleased to be here today, on behalf of the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks, and Treasurers of Ontario, to present to you the EA Danby Certificate of Merit for the Digital Kitchener Strategy. EA Danby was AMCTO's first president, and his vision and innovative spirit were instrumental in establishing our organization more than 75 years ago today. The EA Danby Awards recognized that same spirit of vision and innovation in Ontario's municipalities. The Digital Kitchener Strategy, for which you're being recognized tonight, not only demonstrates your city's commitment to providing excellent municipal service, but also a commitment to building a great city, one that is, in your words, connected, innovative, on-demand, and inclusive. Innovative strategies like Digital Kitchener inspire other municipalities to recognize how they are using technology to enable connections between their residents and their government to build stronger communities. For your work on Digital Kitchener, I am very pleased to present to you today the EA Danby Certificate of Merit. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and I believe Justin and Paul are here from the Information Services Department to join me in accepting the award. Thank you very much, Mr. McMahon, for making the trek down today to present this to us. I know it is something that our staff team put a lot of work and effort into, together with input from the community, and we're quite excited about the various recommendations that are included in it and the direction as it unfolds, and we'll certainly keep you informed as we go forward. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into delegations. I'd like to remind delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentation, and we will begin with Item A, Ms. Amanda Reed, regarding the cost apportioning under the Line Fences Act.
Good evening.
Welcome, Ms. Reed.
I do have a handout for council.
The page will take it from you and share it.
Thank you. I did provide a PowerPoint as well. Perfect, thank you. So that's not Page 1. There we go. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, of course, I am a citizen of Kitchener. I am having a fence issue, so when I did research, I found that Kitchener applied Section 98 of the Municipal Act and decided not to adhere to the Line Fences Act. So what I am here for is to hopefully make a proposal that will satisfy what both of us want. So I understand what you want would be cost savings and effective use of city resources, and what I want is a bylaw clearly setting out a fence dispute process and recourse for citizens if the bylaw has contravened. So in 2004, of course, council passed, or decided to apply the Section 98 based on this report. This is attached in with your handout as well, the full report. This was one of the starting quotes, that the original intent of the act was to adjudicate disputes between farmers. While I would submit that this is a current issue, and I have received quotes for approximately 55 linear feet in my backyard, and to repair it, I was quoted $2,670. To replace it, I was quoted $3,880. So I would submit that this is a significant financial burden for me, so it's a current Another quote from this report was that owners of urbanized-sized lots are using the act as a means of furthering personal disputes. I would submit that most neighbors would rather maintain civil relationships with each other, and the lack of legislation probably causes more disputes. In this report, it was noted that these following municipalities have applied Section 98, Kingston, London, Markham, Mississauga, Richmond Hill, and Vaughan. This is an incomplete statement, because although some of these municipalities have applied Section 98, what the report fails to state is that when they don't adhere to the Line Fences Act, they have alternative dispute processes in place under bylaws. And this is the outline of what each of these municipalities has instead. So Kingston still has the Line Fences Act, and so does Richmond Hill. The other three have a specific fence bylaw within, in their bylaw, with processes. This statement, that staff is of the opinion by discontinuing the application of the Line Fences Act, the people of Kitchener will not be adversely affected. Well, I would submit that the majority of properties, by doing a quick Google Earth search, have fences, so the majority of homeowners could be adversely affected. My proposal is that the city of Kitchener adopt the Mississauga bylaw and dispute procedure, and the reason for that is that the cost to the city is nothing. People will have the recourse to sue civilly under contravention of a bylaw, and the resolution process is set out in a step-by-step form, so both parties are clearly aware of the process and consequences. The reason that this is important is that both parties have the benefit of a fence, regardless if it's on one owner's property 100% or not, and as I stated before, it would be a substantial financial burden to one owner. The rest is included in your handouts, so it is the current Kitchener fence bylaw, and the consequence for not maintaining a fence is fined, is being fined by the city. The Mississauga bylaw is included in your handout, which again, sets out step-by-step what the procedure is for people to settle their disputes. Dispute process is no agreement reached, proceed as per bylaw, no involvement by the city. Step two, recovering the costs of building the fence, no involvement by the city. Initiating a prosecution to recover under the POA, no involvement by the city. So the extent of the city's involvement and expense in the fence dispute was that City Council enacted the bylaw. So I am asking that the city of Kitchener adopt the procedure that Mississauga has.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have some questions for you, and we'll start with Councillor Marsh.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda, for coming in and sharing this. This is very educational for me.
Thank you.
I am wondering, just, can you elaborate a little bit about where you're at right now in a fence dispute process? Are you, has it been resolved, or is it still ongoing?
No, I received several quotes, and I approached my neighbor with the quotes, who I still have a civil relationship with. We do not have, I'm not furthering a dispute. And they said that they were not willing to pay for it, and so bylaw has come out and said that the fence is in total disrepair, and has given both of us until the end of August to rectify it. So I'm not sure who's going to be fined, or whose responsibility it is to fix it, so nothing has happened right now.
Okay. And if you chose just to remove the fence altogether, would that be an option?
No.
That's curious.
No. Their property is about three feet below mine, so without the fence, my property would erode further into their property. So they are currently fixing the retaining wall, but it's not an option. It's not...
Okay, that's fine. Now, on one of your slides, you listed the six municipalities that you shared information about?
Yes.
And I'm just making sure, I'm guessing that Vaughan is one of those, because Mississauga's listed twice in the second slide. It must just be a typo, is it?
Mississauga's listed twice because they have a bylaw, and then they also have a separate, very specific procedure, which is on...
That's fine, okay. So they have two, they have thought this through much more thoroughly than...
Very, very much so.
...the rest of us.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'll just have a question of staff when the time is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. That appears to be all the, oh, no, there are some additional questions for you. Councillor Fernandez?
Thank you, thanks, Amanda. This is an interesting piece of information, but I'd like to understand a little bit further is, what you're asking is essentially for us to change our existing bylaw and how we treat fences that are in disrepair, and go to the bylaws of the municipalities that you have presented to us?
That is correct. I feel that the Kitchener bylaw stops at a very integral part, which is who's responsible for what. So the bylaw states that fences must be in good repair and maintained and that sort of thing, and then it stops. So who's responsible to maintain and repair, who is fined if it's not? And I just found in my research that Mississauga had the most extensive and very easy step-by-step, that both parties are very aware of what their responsibilities and obligations are under the bylaw, and what the consequences are for a party that doesn't, you know, pay for half of the fence.
That they don't comply with maintaining the fence.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I'd like to read this a little bit further, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Zyginetski?
Yeah, thank you for coming in and making your presentation. It's rather difficult to see all the details. I mean, you've provided it with us, but I haven't even read it, other than your presentation. So it makes it difficult for me to, maybe the rest of council, to decide as to what to do with this, other than go on what your word is. I would need to sit down and digest it along with staff and legal staff to see the worthiness of it and how other municipalities are dealing with it. So it makes it pretty difficult. So I'm not prepared to support this unless we defer it and ask staff to review it and come back on another date. That's all I'm thinking at this point in time. How does that stick with you?
Sure. I mean, I had to research it, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect anything less from council to research what the best course of action would be. I just think that something needs to happen, because I feel the Kitchener bylaw just stops, and it needs to go a bit further.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, those are all the questions we have for you. Thanks a lot for coming in this evening, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to questions of staff. I will remind council also that we did get a legal opinion from Ms. McDonald on this, and council can, if they want, by motion, ask Ms. McDonald to share that opinion. She's comfortable with doing that, if that's something that council requests. Councillor Ionidas?
I guess what I, thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I guess the questions I want to hear from staff are the questions that were raised by the delegate, and I wonder if you can answer those questions.
Is your question directed to Ms. McDonald?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. McDonald?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, Councillor Ionidas?
Yeah, Ms. Amanda asked questions on who would get fined if there's a fraction, like if it's on the main line of shared properties. Like, do we have a protocol for that, or how, who gets fined?
I'm sorry, I'm not able to answer that question. I'm not sure, I see Gloria's in the audience, and I'm not sure if that's something she can assist you with.
Okay.
Ms. McNeil, can you assist with that?
Through the mayor, generally how the process that we follow is if something is right on the property line, it becomes the responsibility of both property owners, regardless of who placed it there.
Okay, that's a good one. I can't recall what the other question was, but I guess it was the process or something.
Well, I guess the other question would be, I mean, have we looked at the Mississauga, I think, is the question the delegation was asking, have we looked at the Mississauga model, and is it something we could consider implementing here?
So I think I can answer that question. I'm not aware that we have. As you see from the attached report that Ms. Reed gave with her handout, she circulated, as did I, when I sent you my legal opinion, the report from 2004, when we eliminated the Line Fences Act applying to the city of Kitchener, except for Section 20. Basically, in 30 years at that point, we had received no requests under the Line Fences Act. I'm not aware since 2004 that we've been asked this question, so it hasn't been a big issue for the residents of Kitchener by evidence of lack of question. Obviously, it's a, it's not a mandatory function that municipalities have, it's an optional function. So it's, council can opt to put a provision in a bylaw to deal with this, or council can elect to leave this between the residents to deal with their private matter as it relates to their two properties.
Okay. And I guess my last question, I guess, would be with Gloria. How often do we see similar complaints like this? Do we have, do we have a number per year, or is this a rare occasion?
Through the mayor, I'm not aware of any requests such as this one coming through.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Marsh?
Well, my question is just to staff, what would be the harm in looking into the pros and cons of moving forward with following the lead of Mississauga?
That's really up to the will of council. If you wish staff to do that, it just adds additional work to schedules, so if you give us a priority, it can be done, but it will take some time.
Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I suspect that by law enforcement staff would have a heavy hand in such a review. I want to remind council that really that would fall to Gloria. She doesn't have staff who do this work. And so you've set a business plan upon which you've set priorities, and this would mean that those priorities would be delayed in order to deal with this issue.
Okay, so unless we said that this doesn't have to be in the 2017 business plan, but to request that staff ask that it be added to... request that staff ask that it be added to a future business plan?
That is something that you could move later on.
So I'd like to, I mean, we have here a situation that I'm guessing is, it sounds like it's rare, but it's not as uncommon as it might appear to be by the lack of people coming forward to council, or to the city about this, because really people follow the law until there's no jurisdiction, and then they have to work it out between them. But I would say that, what I would like to put forward is a motion that staff look into it.
I'll come back to you for the motion?
Yeah, okay.
Because we have several more people in the queue.
All right.
Mr. May, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I would just say if you are contemplating adding something to the 2018 business plan, it's probably more appropriate to wait until the draft 2018 business plan is in front of you, so that you can prioritize this amongst other work that will be done. And I believe that'll happen early in the new year. That would give counselors time to look at the material that the delegation's provided, and as I said, prioritize it with other work.
Yes, yep, so that might be when the time comes, the motion. Counselor Janetski?
Well, I had similar questions to Counselor Marsh, and I was going to ask for consideration by staff of this. Mr. May and Gloria McNeil have provided some answers already to the scenario that's potentially unfolding, so I really now don't have a question to staff, because it's sort of been answered by, the responses by the other staff, but I'd like to really see this maybe be considered as part of the future 2018 plan, as one of the items for consideration by staff, and see where it leads to. I mean, there's information here, I have no idea to what degree it states, but I think something that maybe need to be considered. I know I had issues in my war dealing with fences, and remember years ago, we used to have a fence review committee, but that got abandoned for other reasons. I'm talking like 30, 40 years ago. So anyways, I think maybe we should look at it. That's my position.
And just further to that, Counselor Janetski is right, we did used to have appoint counselors to a fence review committee and citizen reps. Certainly, I can remember that from my time on council from '94 through to 2004, and in my recollection, that committee only met once in those 10 years, and then obviously they wouldn't have met since, since we got rid of that process in 2004. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand what's being asked here as well. So this, the issue here is if there's a dispute on whether, like who should, who should maintain a fence if it's on the property line? So I guess my question would be, if we were looking at another model, how would we even determine the location of the fence, whose property it's on, or whether it's on the property line?
So the interesting thing to that is the Line Fences Act was never intended to deal with the boundary dispute, so it was just to deal with the construction, and who was paying for it of the fence. And likewise, as I understand the delegation, she's just looking for someone to say that between she and her neighbor, they have to share in the cost of either repairing that fence or replacing it. So where it's located is a separate issue, and would not form any part of a bylaw. That's really private between the parties, and they have to hire surveyors, they may have to take action to court, so forth. So it's, that's really outside of the scope of this, at least in my view.
That's exactly my concern. So, for example, if we were to go down this road, we couldn't, I'm presuming, we couldn't tell, we wouldn't, first of all, we wouldn't know whether a fence is on the property line or not, or whether it's on one individual's property or the other. And presumably, if it ultimately was on one individual's property, not the other, we couldn't force the person who's, it's not even on their property, to maintain that fence. I'm thinking legally, we could not do that.
That's correct. One of the issues that quite often comes up is determining where it is from a bylaw perspective, because if the fence is located on one individual's property, bylaw would be pursuing that individual that had the fence on their property. So you're quite right with your question. You know, how would we know? It's not something that we would spend the money to ascertain, because you need to hire surveyors to do that.
And again, that was my follow-up. So I mean, if a dispute comes to us, and the proponent's saying that it's on the property line, how, we really can't do it unless someone does a survey, and me, I don't want the city to pay for that survey, so how would we proceed, I guess is just, I know I don't have the Mississauga example in front of us, but is there any resolution to that at all?
No, I would assume that the bylaws have a overriding provision that says it's not to deal with the actual location of the fence. So any formula would say, we're just dealing with the construction and the payment of that construction, not dealing with the location, because that's definitely not something that we can afford to get into on a regular basis, dealing with a dispute between two neighbors.
Okay, so in the situation where two people move in, and there's an existing fence, and they don't know who built it, that we wouldn't be able to help at all?
It doesn't matter who built it, as I understand it, what the delegation's looking for is a formula whereby there is a fence between herself and a neighbor, and it's a mechanism where she can force the neighbor to have to pay a portion of it. It's not a question of who put it there first, it's she wants to have it repaired, and how it gets paid for.
Okay, yeah, I'm still confused as to if there isn't a proper survey, how you can go and have someone pay for something, and we don't even know it's on their property or not. But I think suffice to say, I'm not terribly interested in supporting this.
Counselor Galloway, Seela?
Yeah, I actually had a situation like this in my first home, where I went to build my fence, and I asked my neighbor if they would pay for half the cost, and they said no. And so I paid for the whole fence myself, and that happened, that happened to me. And in my 11 years on council, I've only ever had one constituent ask, and they were in a similar situation that I was, and they paid for their entire fence. I can't support the motion, as it's written right here, because it gives specific, it's worded that it gives specific direction to add it to the business plan, but if you were to put a motion to refer it to the business plan, so that we can evaluate it with the other priorities that we have in bylaw, I could support that. So I'm not sure if that's the intent, is to refer it, or, because the way I read it, it's to include a review in the business planning process, and I wouldn't be able to support that. But if we refer it to the business plan, I can support it to be put along with the rest of the priorities, and we can decide at that time whether or not it's something to move forward with.
Counselor Marsh, do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, the word "process" is the, the word that I was relying on to leave that open-ended. It's the process by which we prioritize the 2018 business plan. It's just to include that as a line item for prioritizing. Do you want...
So perhaps I think what you're trying to do is that, I think what you're trying to say is that staff refer a review of our line fence legislation to the 2018 business planning process?
Fine, that's, that works for me.
Okay. Counselor Singh, you were up next.
Yeah, more of a comment, I don't have a question of staff. I'm glad that Counselor Marsh has changed intent of our motion for it to be referred to the 2018 business plan. I think we have to base all the priorities at that time. This may be an issue, but again, there are many other issues that the municipality grapples with, and we have limited resources from our staff side, as well as from bylaw department, where we can handle all of them, and it needs to be prioritized appropriately, and with the appropriate discussion at that point. And hopefully, leading up to it, staff will have some more information, looking at peer municipalities, and we can gauge exactly the importance of this, and the urgency of this as well. But I think through Counselor Davy's questioning, it raises a concern in my mind, the ambiguity of it all. So I would be cautious when this does come up, but I would be comfortable, at least at this point, to refer to the 2018 business planning process.
Just have one quick question of staff. I do know that when it comes to disputes, and I think questions for Gloria, do we not have an arrangement where there are disputes between neighbors, where we can, I believe we work with CJI or someone in terms of mediation? Is this the kind of thing where we can offer this to the two neighbors as a possibility?
Through the chair, that's certainly something that we can look at doing, and doing a referral to CJI for this, if they're both interested in participating.
Okay, so perhaps you can have that conversation with Ms. Reed afterward, after we deal with this, this evening. That was the only question I had. So Counselor Marsh, you're moving this motion, is there a second or for it? Counselor Fernandez has seconded. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor of the referral? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, thank you. So this has been referred to our 2018 business planning process. We, probably doesn't solve your problem today, but it is something that potentially we'll be looking at more in depth, and that'll be coming back to us in the early part of 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to item number 13, the Brightup Park Ball Diamond, and we have, sorry, no, skipped one. We're moving on to number 200 delegations, and we have Brittany Ziggman here from Geesburg, Funk and Irvin, to express concern regarding a signage matter at the Brightup Community Center. Welcome, Ms. Ziggman.
Thank you for having me today. Uh, one moment, just get organized. I have further documents I can post after, I just want this one posted during my speech. Hello, my name is Brittany Ziggman, and I'm here to express a concern regarding the automatic changing copy sign at the Brightup Center, located at 350 Margaret Avenue, Kitchener. I have two requests for the council tonight. My first request is that the approval for the aforementioned sign be declared null and void. As in accordance with requirements under the Committee of Adjustments' approval, submission SG 2016-007, seen on the screen. You'll notice in the second paragraph, the last sentence says that the sign was approved subject to the following conditions, and the second condition is that the sign was to be turned off between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. We have photographic evidence that I will display afterwards, showing that the sign was in fact turned on during those hours. I have evidence for 10 days, but it was on for months, up until recently. And because these are conditions by law, they are to be declared null and void, the approval is declared null and void. And also, if you'll note in sub condition number three, the final pair, final sentence, sorry, states that failure to fulfill these conditions will result in the approval becoming null and void. Since condition two says that it is to be turned off between those hours, and it was in fact breached, based on the very writing of the Committee of Adjustments, it should be declared null and void. I know the city solicitor and I spoke about this, and she had concern that it was merely glitch, it was rectified very easily, however, the writing is clear, it doesn't matter if it's a small failure, a large failure, any failure of the conditions results in the approval being null and void. Therefore, it should clearly be made null and void. The city solicitor also had a concern that it might not even apply to number two. However, failure to fill these conditions is clearly plural, so at least two of the three conditions apply. And since there was no specific precision, something to the effect of failure to fill conditions one and three, conditions one and two, et cetera, in law, the contraparadigm rule applies, and you go against the drafter. So failure to fulfill these conditions would apply to all three conditions, and therefore the second condition is captured by the language, and since it was not fulfilled, it would be declared null and void. So that is my first request. My second request is that in the alternative, if the first one should fail, that the sign of the Brightup Center shall remain in its current state, which is no flashing, no action, no change of any kind. As I understand it, the city intends to have it changed on an hourly basis going forward. This is a concern, because the first day it was turned on, it was having a changing flashing capacity, and this was a concern to the residents across the way, in the Margaret Palace, sorry. It was turned on, I believe, May 23rd, and it had flashing. Complaints were made, and in fact, a petition was created, 308 signatures out of 500 residents, all of which you signed, we the undersigned, are protesting the flashing electronic sign at the Brightup Center on Margaret Avenue. Therefore, there is a community concern with the sign having a flashing or changing state, and even though not all of them can see it directly from their window, they either walk past it when they're going to the giant tiger next door, every time they turn out of their building, they see it, and they're not a fan of this flashing sign. Therefore, our second request, in the alternative, the first should have failed, is that the sign stay in its current state with no flashing, changing, or other action of any kind, other than maybe a night when everyone's asleep, and it won't affect the residents at all. And that is my submission.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Sorry. Oh, sorry, my mistake. The, I will remind council at this point in time, that this is an issue that actually has already been dealt with by council, and council has approved the Committee of Adjustment recommendation. And so for us to actually have any further dialogue about this issue would actually require a motion to reconsider.
May I request a motion to reconsider, then?
Well, that's up to us to deal with now.
Okay, sorry, I was a little unclear there.
So we've heard, if you want to take a seat, and we'll deliberate on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez?
So that would have to be my first motion before I ask any questions, is that correct?
If you wanted to move, we need a motion to reconsider, and that would require two-thirds support of council.
So I'm going to put forward a motion to reconsider, because if I look at this last statement, I think it's important that we have a little bit further dialogue on this. So that's my motion, is to reconsider, so that we can open this up for discussion.
Is there a second or? There does not appear to be a second or. Okay, so Ms. Ziggman, unfortunately, council wasn't prepared to reconsider this issue. It is something that we've previously dealt with, and so we won't be discussing it any further this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the Brightup Park Ball Diamond, and we have three delegations here. Angela Lara-Giebel, Sean Carlisle, and Bob McKillop. And I'm going, oh, I'm sorry, there's some additional ones as well, who have registered since then. Mr. Fred Regent, Ms. Deborah Strauss, Ms. Jean McFarland, Mr. Ron Moibrook, and Mr. Bill Peg. And I'm going to take Mr. Sean Carlisle first. Sorry, I'm going to take Ms. Angela Lara-Giebel first, because you're first on the queue. Welcome.
So thanks for the opportunity to come back and share my thoughts and concerns about the proposal. I wanted to start by reiterating that I'm very much in favor of team play and all that it provides to children, and I wanted to acknowledge the volunteerism at KNBA for all they do. Volunteering is admirable, and it serves to strengthen our community. I would like to note, there are many ways to get involved and offer our time and resources. Both my husband and I volunteered for many years with Big Brothers, and Girl Guides, and United Way, and other organizations. And I know that many of my other neighborhood residents choose to get involved and give back to their community in other ways as well. Last week at council, KNBA acknowledged that they lack appropriate software to help them schedule efficiently. A complete audit of this system should be job number one, before any funds are spent upgrading the diamonds. Despite all three diamonds being booked every weeknight, last week from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., and all three diamonds being booked all day Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., on Monday, there was one practice on Diamond Two. Diamonds One and Three sat empty. Tuesday, no games at all, all three diamonds sat empty. Wednesday, one game on Three, Diamonds One and Two sat empty. Thursday, no games at all. Friday, practice on One, Diamonds Two sat empty, uh, Two and Three sat empty. Saturday, games took place on Diamond Two. Diamonds One and Three sat empty. Since mid-July, the diamonds have been sitting empty on sunny, dry days, and according to our stats, we're averaging only around 50% utilization. As KNBA is talking about doubling in size in the next few years, lighting these diamonds is at best a half-million-dollar-plus stopgap solution. If the city has indeed determined that there is enough data to establish sustained patterns of baseball growth, then we should be looking at investing in more suitable infrastructure, especially as we're expecting our community to grow. And if indeed the plan is to light all currently unlit ball diamonds as a partial solution, then the total figure to light all those diamonds should be held in comparison to that of acquiring and preparing a new location. We know that the City of Waterloo has gotten rid of two of their ball diamonds, and declined to light others, and this, along with some of the repurposing of the former Kitchener ball diamonds, has put pressure on the remaining diamonds, which are used by both City of Kitchener and Waterloo players. So I'm asking, can we work together on a proposal to build and share appropriate infrastructure to serve the community? Perhaps it's a matter of merging ball associations, maybe it's bringing on a third party to help take a holistic view. Perhaps it's a matter of merging ball associations, maybe it's bringing on a third party to help take a holistic view, to serve not only the current needs but future needs, and help us come up with some creative solutions. Further, regardless of council's decision tonight, I would encourage KNBA to come up with a thorough and definitive plan on how to enforce their code of conduct for their players and their out-of-city guests. Otherwise, it falls to the residents of the neighborhood to try and police the behavior by calling in bylaw and law enforcement, which isn't a good use of anybody's time or resources. I'm a little worried that KNBA hasn't heard or recognized legitimate concerns raised by the residents. And no matter what happens here tonight, it seems to me that a dialogue should begin between KNBA and us, the residents, so we can discuss how we'll deal with this on a move-forward basis, whether or not the lights go in. Our community needs will change, interest in specific sports will ebb and flow, but I think it's time we take a step back, examine the longer-term plan, invest in some real data collection, and then make an informed decision on the future of recreational facilities in this region. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Anetski.
Yeah, thank you for coming in and making your presentation. You read out what the, this past week was in terms of the use of the diamonds, all three of them on a daily basis. I happened to drop by the park on Saturday afternoon around noon, and there was nobody there on any of the three diamonds. But you pointed out that there was a game on Saturday?
There was a game on Saturday, I believe around 11:30.
Later on in the afternoon, okay. That was around noon, I didn't see anybody. So I just thought the place would be packed with people playing, and there's nobody. What was the scenario on Sunday?
Sunday, there was, uh, there was activity, but I believe it was only on one diamond. I know it wasn't all three.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, thank you, Angela, for coming back in and sharing your, your concerns. So, as you said eloquently, the, regardless of the decision tonight, you would like to see KNBA demonstrate their commitment to enforcing their code of conduct and to working with the neighbors. So what, in your view, what would that look like?
You know, it may just be as simple as us getting a room at Brightup Center and sitting down and having an open conversation. This is probably isn't the best, the most conducive to that. And I think it's unfortunate that this proposal raised the concerns and raised people's heads up. I think people were dealing with it in their own ways and, and not reporting a lot of what was going on, just assuming it's a nuisance, but I'll cope with it. And when the proposal came to light, to light the diamond, that was kind of a breaking point for a lot of people, and they just thought, I can't, I can't put up with this any longer. And, and that's on the residents as much as it is on anybody else. So I think if we're able to sit down and talk this through, perhaps there's an opportunity to, to work some of this out.
Okay, thanks very much.
Counselor Gazzola.
Yeah, I, I would like to ask staff or somebody about what we're hearing here, that the, there were so many occasions in July, I think she said, delegate said that the diamonds weren't being used. I don't know who to ask about that, but.
So, so normally, we would ask questions of staff after all the delegations, but I, I think this may help in terms of people's presentations. So I'm wondering if I can just ask, Ms. Kugler, would you be the appropriate person to just simply respond to why we might not be seeing as much activity now as maybe earlier in the summer?
Through here, so the traditional scheduling for the summer months is that the house league programs and the majority of the teams actually finish their season mid-July. So coming into July, the teams then are out to other cities to play, and they're in playoffs. So depending on how competitive the teams are and how far they go into their playoffs will dictate the usage of the facilities.
Thank you. Counselor Gazzola, you still have the floor?
Yes. The, the other question I wanted to ask, you spoke here last week. Could you just refresh, did you canvass your neighborhood? Was it you, or?
Uh, I, I did along with my, my neighbor, Ms. Moses, yes.
Can, can you just give a brief report on the results of that canvas again?
Well, I think another neighbor is going to speak to that in, in more depth, but we did get another 18 signatures just over the past couple of days, and we've received more interest from other.
Well, I'll wait, then, I'll wait if you want, till the other.
Yeah, the point is it expanded beyond the initial area that was targeted as being impacted by the city.
Thank you.
Shut up. Okay, Counselor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for your presentation, and of course, bringing forward to the petition as well, giving the opinion of the wider neighborhood perspective. I missed early part of this report when it was discussed in the, through community services, to, to the committee level. But as I've looked at the report, and one question comes to mind, and it's not necessarily where I sit on this, but I'm sure this is something that's considered by all when, when we decide on this matter, and hear the opposition from the, the neighborhood. Where residents knew that they were purchasing a property adjacent to a ball field, and where it's going to generate noise. And you would only hope, as Kitchener residents, that we want increased usage of our parks, that that activity is going to, over time, increase automatically. How would you counter that?
I would say I bought a house across from a ball diamond with no lights. And we already are exposed to noise 12 hours a day, sometimes longer, on a Saturday, 15 hours. And, and to ask for it to go longer than that, until 11:00 p.m., six nights a week in a residential neighborhood, I think is a little unreasonable. And I think what we're facing is just the community's expanding, and there's lots of interest, and there's more pressure on, on the limited resources and space that we have, I understand that. I also think that this diamond in particular is a lot closer to residences than some of the other diamonds that are already lit. And so, again, I think that's why you're seeing such a reaction from the neighbors, because there isn't as much of a barrier, and the noise carries.
Okay, just wanted to give you that opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all the questions.
Thank you.
Our next delegation is Mr. Sean Carlisle. Welcome, Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your time, for, and providing me with an opportunity to share my concerns. First, I'd like to speak about the issues around the neighborhood notifications and the resident awareness of this proposal. Number one, we are now receiving interest from many concerned residents who are well outside the initial area of the city, the city targeted when notifying residents of this proposal. They're bringing forward concerns around issues of parking and in-game noise, but have never been formally notified by the city or brought into this, this discussion until now. Number two, for those residents who were in the initial, on the initial list as being impacted, there were problems with notifications going out very late. This, combined with the process taking place in late August over holiday season, has meant many others are not able to attend and make their voices heard. I'd like to talk about the registration numbers and predicted interested, interest in baseball. For the third time, we've asked the city for registration stats from the last time the Blue Jays were winning, which was back in the 90s, '93, '92, I think. And we were told staff was unable to find any numbers that far back. We were given numbers for the last five years only. These numbers show almost no growth between 2012 and 2015, and then a jump in 2016, 2017, which aligns with the Jays' success. If we don't have any registration numbers for longer than a five-year period, how are we to ensure accurate future predictions for interest in this sport? Resident impact. Baseball currently runs three to four hours per evening on weeknights, and 11 to 12 hours on weekends. The lights will mean basketball, baseball will run up to seven hours on weeknights and 15 hours a day on Saturdays. When do we, as residents, get to enjoy our back, our backyards and patios? When do they get, when do we get to use the park? When do we, when do our neighborhood kids get to go to sleep? Where's the balance? Given the impact of in-game noise and issues with spectators lingering after games, 11:00 p.m. is simply too late for an end time in a residential neighborhood. Secondhand noise. It's increasingly used to describe noise that is experienced by people who do not produce it. Anti-noise activists say that its effect on people is similar to that of secondhand smoke. Secondhand, secondhand noise has been described as a civil rights issue. Like secondhand smoke, it is put into the environment without people's concern, or people's consent, and then has effects on them that they don't have any control over. What can be pleasant to one person can be completely unwanted for another. Consider boom boxes, car stereos, drag races, and lawn mowers in this context. The pinging of the bat, the clapping, the cheering, yelling during the game, the honking as spectators leave, these are all noises that are manageable during the day, but are unwanted secondhand noise in the evening, certainly past nine o'clock. Secondhand noise can result in sleep disturbances, cardiovascular disturbances, disturbances in mental health, impaired task performance, negative social behavior, and annoyance reactions. Another thing I'd like to address is the distance from ball diamonds in respect to the, the ball diamonds in the Kitchener region. The current ball diamonds that are lit right now, Bridgeport Joe Thompson Park, there's eight homes, 52 meters to the closest residential area. Bud Park Ball Diamonds, 210 meters to the closest residential area. Jack Couch Park, five houses, 51 meters to the closest residential area. And that ball diamond, I believe, has a clay skin, uh, clay skin as well as, same like the, the Brightup one that we have. Rosenberg Park, 25 houses, that's by Stanley Park, 55 meters to the closest residential area. Peter Holman Ball Yard, 196 meters to the closest residential area. Ball diamonds that are lit and unlit. Lions Park, 40 houses, Country Hills Recreation Association, 75 meters to the closest residential area. One clay, one clay skinned that is lit, and one stone dusted is unlit. The unlit, unlit diamonds in Kitchener, Upper Park, Upper Canada Park, 127 meters to the closest residential area. Wilson Park, 35 houses, 23 meters to the closest residential area. Brightup Park, 23 meters to the closest residential area. Of the already lit diamonds, the closest one to the residents is nearly double the distance between Brightup Park and the nearest residential neighborhood, making it difficult to compare impact on residents. Of the unlit diamonds, why is Upper Canada Park not under first consideration as an option to upgrade and light? It is much further away from homes, has a parking lot, and would provide easy access off the 401 for visiting teams, and would provide less disruption for neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlisle. We have some questions for you. Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Carlisle, for giving more clarity on the proximity of the, the neighborhood, you know, the, the houses from the, the ball diamond. Uh, one of the issues that you raised was obviously noise and sometimes behavior before and after the event. One of the recommendations is onsite neighborhood signs, which I'm sure you must have seen in the report. Are you satisfied with that avenue if council were to proceed with the recommendation, with the signage? Do you think they will help to achieve the purpose?
I think, yeah, signage is probably a, a good, a step in the right direction. Yeah, I would, I would think that would be good. I don't know whether that's going to mitigate honking.
All the issues.
And all the other issues, but we'll see.
Well, we would hope that people adhere to, you know, the regulations, and at least the signs are there to show them. The other question is, of course, the cost. The report outlines a significant cost increase from, if Brightup isn't a viable option, alternate site, where the cost of 1.7 million as opposed to some approximately five and a half, or 550,000 approximate. How do you speak to that, and the rationale for the tax base to be able to afford that level of a, of an increase, if the alternate site were to be considered?
Well, I would have to bring up my, the point, the point that my wife brought up earlier. If, if the KDBA's numbers are correct, and, and they're going to hit 2,000 kids in whatever the projected year was, there's, lighting Brightup isn't going to accommodate all those kids. So if there is going to be that, that many kids playing baseball, Kitchen, City of Kitchener is going to have to do something to increase.
You're saying we're going to have to light other diamonds anyways?
Or build diamonds.
Build diamonds, let, and light them to accommodate them, the projected numbers. And just to, to be clear, the estimate is 580,000 for Brightup and 1.79 million for alternate sites. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Pravda, but thank you for coming in, and again, trying to find a balance here, and, and knowing that it, it is impossible to mitigate the in-game noise, some of the issues with parking and all. Would having the people attending these games park in the Brightup Center parking lot and walk to the diamond area, would that be something that would, you'd like?
It, it would be good. I mean, these, these are all secondary issues to me. The in-game noise, and I mean, as, as my wife also said, we, we live by a ball diamond, we know what that means. But we, we have that knowledge that at the, at nine o'clock, it's done, and we can sit in our backyard, and we don't have to worry about any kind of noise like that. So I think, you know, the parking issues, it would be awesome, that would be nice to, to have our street cleared so that our visitors can come and park on the street and, and that kind of thing. But the best way to kind of mitigate that, I think, would be, would be to not have it after nine o'clock.
Okay. Some of the things that we have to balance as counselors is, is responsibility to taxpayers overall. And, and in some case, like this, we're looking at maximizing our current facilities at a much lower cost than building new facilities. We, we know down the road, we're going to have to build those new ones, but for now, this is a, and the light of diamonds at Brightup will also be part of, of, of the ability to facilitate all the scheduling. So how, how would you express balancing the, the needs of the taxpayers of the overall city to the needs of the residents in the immediate area?
Well, I would certainly, my first thing would be to figure out the scheduling situation. As, as we've mentioned before, there's been ball diamonds that have been empty for, you know, considerable, very beautiful days. And I, I, I think there's a scheduling issue that maybe the KNBA, KNBA needs to look at first, before anybody spends any money. I think that would probably be a good way to start. Maybe, maybe it means a shortened season, so to accommodate more people in, in, and have games during the day. Frankly, that's not really my area of expertise, but these would be ways I would, and in this way, you can take that money and put it to a bigger facility, rather than just the stopgap solution of $600,000 in a light, in a, for lighting in a baseball diamond that would clearly affect the residents there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are all the questions we have for you. Thank you for coming in this evening. Our next delegation is Ms. Jean McFarland.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. McFarland.
I have a couple of announce, or a couple of things that I want to pass on before I start my presentation, and I also have some additional numbers to add to the, the petition that Patty, I believe, submitted to you when this all started. So my first statement is from a neighborhood resident who says, "We are totally in support of youth having a place to play baseball, as long as night games are limited to youth teams. If there are adults playing, we believe that the noise will not stop at 11:00 p.m. This will result in noise and poor behavior extending late into the evening, disturbing the neighborhood." And that's from Cheryl Luskom. Uh, my neighbor Dawn, who was unable to come tonight, is in opposition to adding lights to the Brightup Ball Diamonds One and Two. He feels that it's a waste of tax dollars and a contributor, and a contributor to light pollution.
Okay, thank you.
And then names on the petition, there were 19 additional names added tonight, so that brings the total names on the petition to 63.
Okay, you can provide those later to the clerk?
Sorry?
If you can provide those names later to the clerk?
Yeah, um, they're, they're on the petition that Patty has.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, delegates, and visitors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to begin by saying that I am 100% behind minor sports, and I even do cheer for the Blue Jays. I also treasure my neighborhood and the peaceful, quiet, family-friendly environment that I've enjoyed there for the past 29 years. I selected noise and nuisance bylaws as a subject to discuss this evening. The City of Kitchener Noise Bylaw states that excessive noise that is likely to disturb anyone at any time of the day is not tolerated by the City of Kitchener. This includes yelling, loud music, radio, television, or any other unusual noise. The City of Kitchener Nuisance Bylaw defines. The City of Kitchener Nuisance Bylaw defines a nuisance as any action or activity in a public space that causes a disturbance and has a negative impact on person or persons. Two of the examples from this bylaw which are most pertinent include urinating and yelling. In my opinion, the noise and behavioral issues of concern highlighted by Ms. Moses and Ms. Lara Gabel on Monday, August twenty-first during council meetings should, without a doubt, be addressed under the City of Kitchener Noise and Nuisance Bylaws. I'm really stumped as to how the noise reportedly emanating from the ballgames on Brightup Park Diamonds one and two does not fall within and is addressed by the stated bylaws. I had an opportunity to speak to Gloria McNeil, Director Enforcement, Bylaw Enforcement, on Friday, August the twenty-fifth. My understanding of our conversation is that sporting events do indeed fall under the noise bylaw. My understanding of the process in filing a complaint is as follows. The affected neighbor contacts the police. The police dispatch the bylaw officer. The bylaw officer may or may not speak to the complainant depending on whether they want to be addressed or not. The bylaw officer always responds to the call, and it is the bylaw officer's judgment call whether or not the noise is in fact excessive and thus warrants a conversation with the offending party or parties. Given my understanding of the process, I would ask that the city ensure that there are parameters for noise assessment developed and consistently applied to all noise complaints. In my opinion, a subjective call is just not good enough. My concern is that by adding lighting to the baseball diamonds to extend playing time, the already excessive noise and poor behavior will extend later into the evening. As you have probably surmised, I am clearly against adding lighting to the Brightup Ball Diamonds one and two. I would implore council to consider the arguments against installation of these lights into our peaceful neighborhood. We are a neighborhood of working people, retirees and young families who should not have to contend with noxious and invasive noise and lights well into the evening hours. Please make the right decision for our community and locate lit ball diamonds away from our homes. Please use our tax dollars wisely. Please consider the negative impact on us before you spend this money on a seasonal venue. I would like to thank Sarah Marsh, our counselor, for all her support and kind words on this daunting journey. Thank you for your time and interest.
Thank you very much for coming in today. We do have some questions for you. Counselor Gazola.
Yes, I would thank you for all of that, but I would like to just, if you could just briefly give us the results of the canvassing that you carried on in your neighborhood.
The petition?
Yes, yeah.
The petition now has a total of sixty-three names on it.
I'm just asking you to move over to the middle so that the mics are picking you up. Thank you.
I was trying to hear you.
I'm sorry, how many names are on it?
Sixty-three.
And sixty-three names, now what is the breakdown of those names? How many of those people are in favor or opposed to?
Oh, these are people that are opposed to adding lights to the diamond.
Okay, do you have any idea of the counts on the other side?
I don't because I didn't do the petition. I'm just passing on numbers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
Well, so Jean, thank you for coming in and sharing your position. I just want to ask, you know, you're asking for a change in how the noise bylaw is enforced?
Mm-hmm.
And if you want to, could you clarify what you mean with regard to how, so here's the thing, is that our noise bylaw officers could, in the case of consistently very loud noise, have a decibel reading. But what we've seen, as I think you've read, is that some of the decibel reports are not over the acceptable level as it stands can now. So are you suggesting that we decrease the acceptable level or that we change how we look at the noise bylaw, oh, sorry, at the noise that is a hindrance to the neighbors?
Okay, I think first of all, Sarah, there's some question as to the accuracy of the decibel levels that were reported, so I think there needs to be clarification of that. And I think what I'm asking for is some kind of standardization so that bylaw officers A, B, and C are all going to come to the ballpark with the same information and apply it across the field, not just, oh, yeah, that's kind of loud, or no, it's not. We need a standard to help guide us. I think that applies to both the teams and the community. You know, below this, we're going to live with it. Above this, maybe it's getting a little excessive and we need to have a chat. So as far as I know, there are no standards in place for judgment other than the subjective call of the bylaw officer, and I honestly don't think that's good enough.
Yeah, that is how it's been described, yes, but I, the way I understand it, there is, you know, a decibel level after which that's, it's unacceptable, but it's higher than what we've seen, the decibel readings, you know, to be at the ball diamond. So we either change how we describe the noise disturbance or we lower the decibel, is what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, could we please standardize it?
Standardize it, right. Okay.
Yeah.
All righty, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening. Our next delegation is Mr. Fred Regent.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to be heard on this very important matter. A close friend of mine gave me a piece of advice regarding this matter. She urged me to come from the heart to reach your hearts. My street, Ridgewood Avenue, is presently like a Pleasant Valley Sunday Street. Henry, my rescue Siamese cat, is truly the cat about town. At eight a.m., he strolls down to Fairfield Avenue and gets patted by kids going to school. Everyone seems to smile and enjoys meeting Henry. That's how peaceful this neighborhood is. People have lived in this wonderfully peaceful and quiet neighborhood for over sixty years. I purchased my home here so that I could sit out and enjoy pleasant evenings, quiet evenings. I accepted that there were baseball diamonds adjacent and viewed this as a positive feature. Youth need a place to exercise and have fun. Had lights been present, would I have purchased? No, that's a whole different ballgame. The reduction of our quiet evening times will simply change the whole neighborhood forever. Already, stress levels have increased. My friends are wondering if they should sell and move. Several rilters have commented on potential property value and the effects of noise and light pollution. The consensus is not positive. I respectfully request that before a life-altering decision is made that will affect thousands of lives, that a neutral third party be authorized by the city to conduct an assessment and evaluation of noise, light, traffic, parking, et cetera, that lit ball diamonds in other neighborhoods experience. Perhaps the long-term cost of future health care regarding increased stress leaves, increased stress levels on a population could be a mitigating factor in your carefully considered decision this evening. So if I understand correctly, the city will save money by lighting Brightup Park versus building a new sports facility in a more appropriate area. Does the convenience of a few sports enthusiasts and the convenience for the City of Kitchener nullify and negate the right to quiet enjoyment of thousands of nearby residents? I certainly hope not.
Thank you very much for coming in. There don't appear to be any questions at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next delegation is Deborah Strauss. Welcome, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm sort of one who's coming later to this. I'm transitioning over to Ridgewood, and it's somewhat with a great deal of humor, I kind of see it, that I'm once again going to be living by a ballpark. In ninety-four, I moved up from New Brunswick and I bought a house on Dartmoor Crescent in Waterloo. Absolutely beautiful area again. It's behind Bridge and University. And I knew where Bechtel Park was. I see it as a true gem. I see it as a plus, and I knew a ball diamond was there. It has to be at least eight blocks away. And at night, it's brightly lit, changes the quality of the light when you sit out in your patio. And it's more about the glow in the sky than it is anything else. So you see it, it's not overwhelming. You hear the crack of every bat, you hear the roar of the crowd, so it's not about decimal levels. On continuing basis, it's, you have this lull and you're quiet, and all of a sudden, everyone's awake. So I'm the one who had to rassle the six-year-old back into bed all the time when those cracks of the bat or those roar of the crowds would break her out. So when I heard that this was happening, I thought, they're thinking too small. This is a huge, you know, this is a vast area. It's not just people who back onto the park. And I also thought, and this point was raised, most lit parks are further away from residential areas. This is very small. These people are right there, they're going to be living right there in the backstop. Normally, they're farther away and you have a bit of a break. And then I thought, well, where's the deep research into how is this going to affect on, not just decimal levels or as, in immediate areas, but how far will it go out? Like, I'm eight, at least eight blocks away from the Bechtel Park. I hear it every week, and I don't have that six-year-old, she's moved out, so I don't have that issue anymore. The other piece is, you know, all of these things do cost money. And some of the research they've shown again today, you know, I work a lot in IT, I work a lot with data, doing analysis. I'm sure there's a lot of space in a lot of diamonds that does not get used. I see no example or no concrete evidence that there's productive use of the current parks as far as scheduling these, that you need to rush over, put this out, when you know long-term you're going to have to build. So I think you should really step back, say, to be really fiscally responsible as well. Perhaps you could ask for a bit more review in that case, too. And that, so thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in, Ms. Strauss. We do have some questions for you. The first one is from, Ms., Counselor Marsh.
Hi, thank you for coming in, Ms. Strauss. So what I want to understand from you is, when you were eight blocks away from a ball diamond, was that a young kids playing or adults or a mix, or, do you remember?
Oh, it's a good thing you asked that. So I was talking about the night games, obviously that diamond's used for many of the others. In fact, this last Saturday, I threw a couple of people in the car and said, come on, you've got to come see this. And so we drove over to Bechtel, and sure enough, it's adults playing or young men playing or late teenagers playing perhaps. And everyone was dragging a cooler behind them. Now, I don't know for sure what was in those coolers. I roll it back thirty-five years and I played high-end softball, and I have to tell you, it wasn't always water in those coolers. I don't think people change. So you get a lot of noise and it's generally adults. So again, you're not increasing minor or young people by and large. This is really a subset of the older demographics.
Okay, I'll have some questions of staff at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions we have for you. Thanks for coming in this evening. Our next delegation is Mr. Ron Moibrook. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You had it perfect the first time, Moibrook, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back, and feel like I'm getting to know you guys quite well. And thank, I want to thank everyone from my association and a lot of our supporters for being here as well. So I want to talk quickly about some of the things that have happened over the last little while. So there's lots of points that have been raised over the last little while around the proposals. The staff report, I feel like that speaks to, the vast majority talks about the decimal levels and various other things. You've all had a chance to read that. I want to say that KNBA is fully committed. I know we've had some discussions around what we've done, what we haven't done. I've since talked to some folks in our group, and there's more done than I am even aware of, of people talking to other people, and all of our coaches have been talked to and talking to different associations. So we are fully committed to this. The neighbors, I totally respect the neighbors that are behind us. We are not here to disrespect what they're here to do, and we're not here to, we're here to work together. That's what we're here for. So go through a couple of items, looking at the parking concerns that are there. KNBA has notified, we notified our rep coaches on April twenty-first while they're picking up their equipment of the designated parking areas. There's been several other instances where we've reinforced that statement so that people are aware, so that everyone in our organization is aware that parking at the community center is the desired parking location, and that is intended to alleviate a lot of those concerns. Of the noise concerns, the staff report does indicate that those noise levels are within acceptable levels. My experience at the ball diamond would indicate the same. It's, it is a noise that is, I've never found to be overly loud, and certainly the staff report would support that. We have continued to communicate with our groups, especially around the music and the boom boxes. That's been something that's been strictly banned from our organization. We've talked to every team and every coach there, saying that's not something that we support, and we've asked them to shut that down if they were doing it. And we continue to do those notifications on a regular basis to ensure that people are being compliant. On the public urination concerns, again, three different occasions where we have reinforced that fact and said, this is not something that we support, and we will continue to do that. As always, we will continue to reinforce our code of conduct, of which that is clearly something that we don't support, and we will continue to ensure that our folks are aware of that. Some discussions came up around diamond usage. Clearly, there is a peak period between May to July where the main season is on, all the rep teams are playing, all the house gigs are playing. That is certainly the peak season. Some discussion around the last week in August, August is playoff season. There are times when there's a two-out-of-three series where things don't go on that are originally scheduled. There's times when some exhibition games are booked and the opposition cancels. So with the five-day lead time, that stays on the books, but the other team's not coming, so no one's going to be on that field. There's some rain days where, we've talked about earlier, it rains, and those sort of things. So there's lots of scheduling reasons that diamonds may sit open, especially this time of year, the season is wrapping up. And so those are those peak periods where you're certainly going to see the demand. Baseball needs, there's lots of diamonds around that aren't suitable for our rep baseball, lots of the B diamonds. We're known for having some of the best diamonds. Other cities love to come here to play on our quality diamonds, and those are the ones that are the suitable ones for our rep baseball, Brightup being some of the most beautiful diamonds we've had. So those are wonderful. Accessibility to these diamonds, we're going to let every kid play. That is certainly our desire. The Blue Jays aren't the only reason that we have increased participation, the overall growth of the city, and the programming and the marketing that we would like to do. Our programming is certainly drawing people, and certainly we want to market to a greater group. We have plans that we're not executing because of that. So we don't believe it's just the Blue Jays. I know that's something that comes up a lot, and it's certainly a topic, but we're going to keep growing, and I hope they get better and keep growing, but even if they don't, we are going to continue to be strong. Talks about rep teams, they have to practice. Continual conversations, we don't have enough practice diamonds. This is a chain effect of we make more diamonds, we have more practice times, our teams continue to have the ability to improve and get better. So that's very important. So in summary, there is a lot of support for these lights. Obviously, we've heard things in opposition, there's significant support as well, letters to the council have been sent, commentaries on Facebook, things that are happening in the news media. There is a lot of support for this. for, for this. Our code of conduct is out there. We will, we do enforce it. We will continue to enforce it. We have spoken directly to all of our coaches. We have spoken to visiting coaches. We have spoken to the association to have information posted as well. So that is out there, and we understand the importance of enforcing that for our neighbors. So thank you for, for listening, and you probably have questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Muybrook. We have five members of council thus far who have questions for you. And we'll start with Counselor Singh.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, sir. And thank you to you and your association for being a good community partner. And you laid out the efforts that you, you know, you guys have been trying to make to ease some of the major concerns of the neighborhood outside of the, the lighting and the noise issue, which is hard to factor. And I'm glad that you focused your presentation on usage, because that's, that was going to be my question of staff, and I'll ask you as well. So you gave some rationale for usage, that it's not as easy to, to move, you know, to accommodate the schedule that makes usage.
Correct.
But at the same time, you're saying the effort is made to promote, of course, the sport, to, to attract more, more youth to it, and as adults as well. So will two ball diamonds, lighting of two ball diamonds be enough, or a greater capacity is required in short time?
Since you mentioned, you didn't mention adults, we have nothing to do with anyone over the age of eighteen.
Okay.
So it's strictly that. And I believe the staff report does speak to additional demand beyond these ball diamonds.
When I mention adults, I'm saying all user groups, right? All age groups of users.
Yeah. So is this enough to meet the demand that we suspect? No. It's, it's a start. It certainly gets some room, and I believe there's information around additional growth as well.
And the two ball diamonds will capture additional growth, or when, like, you know, what type of timeframe do you think will come to a point where more ball diamonds or A-level ball diamonds for rep teams would be required that are lit as well?
Yeah. I think most of the information around the growth projections are in the staff report. I don't have all the numbers around what the usage patterns and the additional adult ball diamonds, so I wouldn't try to speak to that. But the staff report covers that.
Okay. So I'll ask one more question. I find myself a little bit on the fence on this one, because I see from your vantage point, as well as I'm sympathetic to the concerns of the area residents as well. If for some reason council were to reject the recommendation from staff, what would the impact be to your association, more for the coming season, I guess?
Yeah. So for the coming season, we currently are, we had to cut off registrations early this year. With the anticipated growth, and that we feel to be continued, the more kids have to be turned away from baseball. We are at capacity as far as being able to play. We certainly couldn't expand our program. We certainly couldn't give our rep teams additional practice times. It would be status quo at best, and any additional would be unable to join.
Okay. All right. That's fair. Thank you.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Vavenevic. Thanks again for coming in. Could you address the alcohol consumption within your code of conduct?
Yes. Yes. So we have been very clear. Our code of conduct has always banned alcohol consumption in fields. We have been additionally forceful this year. I've sent a email to all of our rep coaches stating that any consumption of alcohol at the game by a coach would result in immediate suspension from the league. And they would be, they'd be out. I made a statement that any team member or parent that was caught drinking at a game, they would result in the forfeiture of that game and suspension of the coach. No tolerance, zero. And I believe those are the words I said. Guys, no more of this can ever happen. Very few was happening. There was some reports of a little bit of guys sitting in the back of drunks. And that was absolutely something that we did not support, and we were very forceful with it, covering both coaches, parents. And there's a zero tolerance. So it's always been there, but we certainly reinforced it over and above this year.
Okay. When it comes to noise levels, I, I want to get an idea of how many people would attend a game. So I, I've been thinking, parents, grandparents, some siblings. How many players are on each roster, on average?
Twelve's a normal number.
So twelve. So if we talk parents, grandparents, siblings, friends, is there a way of putting an average on that, you think?
If I'm thinking about the people sitting up on the hill at Bright Up, the number of lawn chairs, the opposing team, I would say for an average game during the week, forty?
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask a pretty obvious question here, but it's been brought up that some of our other parks, like Upper Canada Park, might be an option for you. But those are softball diamonds. So why can you not play a hardball game on a softball diamond?
The dimensions are a big deal. The baseball requires a ninety-foot bases, so softball diamonds aren't that big. The bases would be in the outfield. The grass infield is pretty important for rep-level baseball. Those are what make the field special, and what our rep players deserve. So the dimensions are the big one. If it's not big enough, it's impossible. And if it's not of high enough quality, then it's not up to the rep standards that I think our city would like to stand up for.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Iannetta, you're next.
Yeah. Thank you for coming in again. And I guess my question is, you do mention your code of conduct. Is it, do you have it, like, displayed on your website or anything like that, or is it somewhere where it's easy accessible?
Yeah. It's linked to the website. And we've since created an updated version. Obviously, this conversation has made us look at it and add additional points to it to make it more forceful. I've implemented something where we're going to add that code of conduct to every registration so that people are agreeing to it specifically every time they register for anything, that this is what they abide by. So those are the updates that have already been made. So that's, so that's there. So it's, it's been updated. It is posted. And we are asking folks, every time they register for any program, that they say, yes, I have read this, and I do abide by that. We're also looking at implementing a respect in sport program that is, I think hockey does something similar, where people are having to go through and do a program where they sign up for that, and they go through that. So it's, respect is a big deal to me. In our newsletter earlier this year, before actually any of this has happened, in my president's message, I was very clear that what I wanted to see this year, the improvement, was a level of respect. That was directed at players and umpires and coaches, and it certainly should include the neighborhoods that we're playing in. And I do want, while I've got a little bit of time on the floor.
No, you, you have time.
Okay. So I just want to say one thing. One of the neighbors did mention, I went to cover my thought, that she'd love to sit down, have a conversation with us, and determine how we can work together. Yes, all for it. Like, we absolutely should do that. We have a lot of fantastic people, if you look up here, that can help make a neighborhood better. And that's what we'd like to do.
Can I ask who's all here from?
I don't get, name them all, but some of our coaches there, umpires, players, board members, parents. The way that parents do, they're important. Parents back here, so there's quite a good number.
Okay. And then my final question is, I can't recall from last week, but what is the membership of the organization, like, kids and all?
The total number?
Yes.
It was around a thousand within.
Thousand?
A thousand and forty-six. Thank you.
Thousand and forty-six. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Marsh, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Muybrook.
Thanks, Sarah.
Am I close? Look, I appreciate your presentation and, and your words to say that you're fully committed to working together. I am aware that as a mainly volunteer-run organization, that it's challenging to stay on top of all the, all the things that need to be done. So I'm just curious, if, if the lights were not being used, can you, can you commit that there would be excellent level of communication that would end up in the lights being turned off early, because they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't be needed when scheduled?
Yes. I, like I said the last time I was here as well, that the city is working on a scheduling program, and, and I want to help our association do that as well, that a lot of that was, was automatic, so that when things are canceled, the notifications become automatic to the city. Obviously, we have work to do together, and
Yes.
I volunteered for that.
Okay.
So, and that's kind of what I do for a living as well, is that sort of thing. So I'm more than happy to take, to take that on. That'd be a personal thing for me to say, let's work together to make sure that if there's not a game there, the city is aware of that. And I don't know the city protocols for turning the lights off, but we would certainly do our part.
Okay. I'm glad you mentioned last week, because one thing that we talked about last week was the potential for maybe having practices scheduled at the later times, and then that might result in the lights being turned off earlier. Would, have you given that any further consideration?
We would want to use those fields for, for games as much as possible. Certainly, if there's times when there is the opportunity to have a practice at a game, we'd look at that. But to be honest, we'd rather have the practices on the lower-quality diamonds and the games on the high-quality diamonds. That would be our preference.
So then that would not be an option, really, to have?
Not our primary option.
No. Okay. And I'm concerned about the other, sorry, the other thing that we talked about, which was the code of conduct. So tell us more, you know, based on the fact that the KNBA this year really wasn't able to demonstrate the commitment to enforce the code of conduct, as demonstrated through complaints about Bright Up Park this season. What would change?
Okay. First, I'll disagree that we didn't do a good job. I know that we've talked to, I know that we've talked to many people. We talked to all the coaches. We talked to all the visiting coaches. We sent out notifications. We sent repeated emails to our members. So as far as, we don't feel we've done a good job. I don't, I really agree with that statement. Have we reached perfection? No. Have we reached perfection in the conduct of our citizens? No, not yet. We have yet to reach perfection. There is behavior that is still not acceptable that's happening in the park by both our members and others. We certainly will continue to work to make sure people are aware of proper conduct. And we will be very diligent with that. Can I guarantee perfect conduct? No. I don't think anybody can. So I think we've made a solid effort. I, our group has worked very hard, more than I was even aware of. They made me very aware after my first presentation last week, that some of the stuff you said we didn't do, we did do. Here's the stuff I did. And Mr. Schilling was amazing at, he's been around doing that, talking to people directly at the parks out there many, many times, having those conversations with both sides, making it very clear of what's expected at our parks. So yes, we've done our diligence. Were we perfectly doing our diligence? I think we've done well. Perfect? Probably not. Have people behaved perfectly? Not quite yet.
No.
But we will continue to do our part.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Next up, we have Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. Thanks, Ron, for coming in again and, and making a very compelling case for the lights. One of the things we heard from the residents was, was about the use of the diamonds.
Yep.
And you were very clear on the reason that there's less use at certain times during the year. Your house leagues are done, and we're into playoffs. Can you be a little bit more clear on what the season is specifically? Does it start sort of beginning of May with practices, or does it start with games right away? And when is the season officially over?
So the beginning is the beginning of May. It would be one of the first Mondays in May, I believe, house league would start. My office folks would tell me. But the beginning of May, going through to the regular season for rep teams, or for our house league teams, their final tournaments, usually the second week of July. So that would certainly be the, the big one. And then the rep teams will wrap up their regular seasons, usually the first, beginning of the second week of August, and then go into playoffs from there, wrapping up. We just wrapped up most of them last weekend.
Okay. So by Labor Day, there's no more playing on the fields of Kitchener Minor Ball?
Well, we do, we do host our, that's where all the Ontario championships would happen on Labor Day. We do host one at Holman. Currently, we don't host one at Bright Up Park, but yes, we are done by Labor Day.
Yeah. Okay. So once kids are back to school, pretty much, the season's over?
We are, no, no, not necessarily. We are engaging in a fall baseball program to continue to, to engage the kids throughout the season. So we started that again this year. We have a registration of over sixty kids have signed up for our fall baseball program. That runs mostly its practices, a few games that would be played at Bright Up on weekends. And we're doing some traveling as well. So there is a continuation through to the, sorry, October twenty-first is the last date of scheduled games in our fall baseball program.
Okay. And we were talking about the, the diamonds that were not used.
Yep.
And you gave some, some good rationale. I'm certainly understanding, having my kids in ball, I understand how this can happen.
Yeah.
What is your turnaround if, say, for example, an opposing team was able to, was canceling, and I don't know what time they have to cancel by, for another team or another game to be played on those diamonds so that they are used, or a practice to be done? Is there, do you have a turnaround time that you can do that?
I mean, it's very dependent on, obviously, it's a very scheduled activity. And to gather a team together for a practice, or even harder, two full teams together for a game, you need probably at least a week's lead time. As a parent, you could put out a quick call, hey, we're having a quick practice over at the park today, and you'd get some kids. But it wouldn't be, truly, you wouldn't know. So typically, at least a week notice would be given to parents. Obviously, for a practice, it's less. A game, you need two teams to agree to come at the same time.
Right.
So probably more than a week for that, because everyone's got their schedules.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. I was just trying to see if there was ability to use those diamonds on, on those sudden turnovers, those changes, especially for practices, because you, you commented that resident, parents are concerned that kids aren't practicing enough. So
Yeah. You could put, if it's an open field, it's not a rainout. If it's truly a canceled game, we could put a call out to, hey, this is available. Let's, who wants it for a practice? That would be part of the notification system. We'd have to work with them.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gazzola, you're next.
Yes. I, I don't have any questions on, on your code of conduct and all of the other issues. You have people involved, and there's always lapses with people. And I've fully realized that you're an organization, I imagine is totally run by volunteers. I don't know if you have any paid staff at all, but, and that you're, you're a very professional organization. We're fortunate in, in our community to have a lot of tremendous minor sports organizations, and you're another one. My, my only question is, there always has to be a Plan B, or should be a Plan B. What happens to minor baseball if council decides not to put these lights in at Bright Up?
So first, thanks for the kind words about the association. And yes, we do our best to be a professional organization. And I think we do a pretty good job. As far as, if the lights don't go forward, we have the current inventory. The inventory doesn't go up, barring other decisions to make that inventory go up otherwise. We, status quo. We stay with the same registration. We stay with the same number of practices during the year. We, if there's more desire to play the game, we won't be able to expand. We won't be able to create new rep teams, which is currently in the, in the plan. So yeah, if it's, we don't go forward, we stay where we are today, which we don't want to. We think there's more kids that want to play out there. We feel that baseball teaches a lot of good stuff. We want them to participate. So that's what we do. We would just stay where we are.
Okay. And that's what I expect. And I also suspect that you will still petition to move ahead, regardless of what happens tonight, that you will want to continue to try to improve, improve your enrollment and
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, so the sun will come up tomorrow. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, it will.
Just might be a much more expensive sun. Counselor Iannetski.
You indicated that the enrollment is going in, and you need more diamonds, et cetera. Is the enrollment basically as a result of brand-new players interested, or are the players from previous times that they sort of dropped out are now back on the scene? Or is it basically all new, new kids?
The vast majority of our players are coming at the very young ages. We're seeing rookie participation, mosquito, which are the two youngest ages. Those are the, those are the areas we've been able to form three teams at the rep level, and our house leagues are full. So certainly, it's young kids coming in. Obviously, the increase in the popularity of baseball has caught the attention of the younger families, and the kids are coming. And the kids are coming. So it's very much the younger folks that are coming up, and they're going to continue to grow. And they have friends and they... As we continue to attract folks, a lot of our programs are geared toward rookie mosquito to bring those folks in. We are working hard to make sure that those young kids stay with our program by building things such as we have our elite teams, which keep people from leaving the city to play higher-level baseball. We have additional rep teams which keep them here. So as they grow older, we feel they're going to stay with our organization. So it's definitely younger ages and that group. We're working real hard to keep them with us all the way through.
Okay. The... You said you had about 12 kids on the team roughly. How many teams would there be in the house league in KW? Or in Kitchener, as you say? And it varies from age groups as well, because I mean, you're not going to be playing... 10-year-olds are not going to be playing 14-year-olds. I mean, they're all playing the same...
Right, so everyone stays in the same age group. So there's 126 overall between Kitchener and Waterloo. In a typical house league, I think some of the bigger ones, rookie and mosquito, I believe. I'm going to say 12, was it? 12, 13 was our biggest? So they're only with 18 teams, and that's one age group. And 16 teams in another age group.
So it varies by group depending on age and enrollment?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Of all the teams that are playing in the house league, does everybody make the playoffs?
In house league, they finish with a tournament, where I believe the top four teams will make that final weekend and play two games. So it's just one extra day that they're playing their finals on.
Okay, not because I just wondered, because sometimes you just get the top six teams make the playoffs and the rest, just that's the end of the season for them? Or does everybody...
Yeah, in house league, pretty much all play the same number of games. Maybe the top teams play two extra games at the end on one day.
Okay. We've had quite a bit of rain this past season. And I know you mentioned you get rainout games and stuff like that. But rainout games also can say, well, it's been raining this afternoon. And it looks like the forecast is rain this evening. Game's canceled. But sometimes there's a threat of rain, but nothing's happened yet. Would you start a game and play until fourth inning? And all of a sudden, it's a downpour and you've got to call it, or...
So yes, so our policy is that the game goes on until the game is canceled. So if the field is open, the teams are to show up for the field, even if it's pouring rain. So the games go on. If the field is closed, the game is off immediately. So that the field can close for a threat of rain, for dampness, lightning, obviously. But yeah, so if the field is open, we play. And if it rains, then we go on until the umpire says the game is over.
Okay. And the final question basically comes down to is that now that you're in a playoff season and elimination, there's usually fewer games. So come now September, getting into October, there'll be few... There'll be less ballgames at these particular diamonds at Brightup. Is that what I would gather? Or would you still see a ballgame every night and even on the weekends?
No, it's certainly less. And we are going to host our fall ball program. So we have some practices during the week, and there'll be games on some weekends on those diamonds. But certainly not the same as in the peak periods.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ron, that appears to be all of the questions. So thank you very much for answering them all. And thank you for everything you and all of the volunteers do with Kitchener Minor Ball. It's much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all.
Okay, our next delegation is Mr. Bill Peg. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's good to be here. A couple of things, just to start off. In the 70s and the 80s, we were building ball diamonds and we were building sports fields. I won't even talk about ball diamonds. We were building sports fields because we had extra land. The city was going this way. And I think we all now know that because of changes that came down from Queen's Park, cities are tending to go this way now. So I have a couple of questions. What happens to minor sports groups, not just baseball, soccer, or any that use fields? Working with the city who wish to upgrade some of the B-level facilities that we have with lights in the future? What happens to those fields that have been around for decades? And I'm going to name a few, and you're all going to know where they are. Cherry Park. Cloverdale, between Counselor Gazola and myself. Crosby, Driftwood, Forest Hill, Green Gable, Idlewood, Kaufman, Knollwood, and on and on. So what happens? What's going to happen when we get the call at one of those parks to perhaps increase the usage or maximize the usage on it with lights? If the Brightup proposal is rejected by council, then objections from the local residents regarding improvements or lights to some of these other fields throughout the city that have been around for decades will be a slam dunk. They'll just go back to the Brightup model and say, well, you didn't approve it at Brightup, so you can't really approve it here. So go build a new park somewhere else on land that we don't have and pay a whole bunch of money. Essentially, council would be boxing itself in. And it would be boxing future councils in, in my opinion, with enhancements to existing facilities. Also from that, what kind of a message do we send to the hundreds of volunteers that we have in minor sports today? Not just baseball, but all minor sports. What message are we sending? What message are we saying to them, to their parents and the players? Although the players aren't involved at the level of where we're going to play, all they want to do is play the sport. That's what they want to play. You know, at Brightup Park, we're not looking to move Jack Couch over to Brightup Park, and the Panthers play there, and we've got 500 or 700 people, and we're going crazy three nights a week. Or we get over 1,000 people like we had the other night. It's kids, young kids. Mr. Schilling just pointed out to me a minute ago that minor ball has also taken over T-ball. So the vast majority of the kids, as Ron answered, are coming in at the very young ages. And at Brightup Park, it's mostly young kids that are playing at Brightup Park. So again, I'd like you to consider the fact and put it in perspective that it's kids. It's young kids. I will not deny, I cannot deny that there is noise. Yep, there's noise. But we've dealt with the noise in the report from the city. So I ask for your consideration on this very important issue, not just for Brightup, but for other parks all around the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We do have some questions for you. Counselor Janetski.
Thank you for your presentation. You outlined a list of ball diamonds, Cherry Park...
And there's a couple of soccer fields in there too, Counselor.
But you said Cherry Park, Knoll, Cloverdale, et cetera. Are those type A ball diamonds that are... Or just...
B. They're B.
They're B diamonds?
You could ask Ms. Kugler. They're all B facilities.
Are there any B diamonds in Kitchener that are lit?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. That's basically it. I just have two questions, just basically what you were saying. Good luck to the Panthers.
Yeah, we'll need it. Counselor Mark.
Thanks for coming in and sharing your thoughts. Yeah, just to follow up on Counselor Janetski's questioning. So you're naming a situation that's just theoretical at this point. It's just not...
No doubt about it.
Right, and so I hope that you recognize that, you know, our council does not... If we did not approve the lights for this park, that wouldn't necessarily be setting a precedent for parks down the road, you know.
Sure.
Yeah, especially...
Granted.
Yeah. So basically, I just wanted to clarify that. And yeah, thank you very much.
Other questions? Bill, I just have one. You've obviously been involved in sports for many years, both through this and the Kitchener Sport Association. And you're involved with bingo and so on. And so you have a sense of the important role that sports plays in the community, particularly amongst young people. I guess I want to build on your hypothetical situation around these other parks, whether it's for ball or for other sports. If all of a sudden, we started seeing this council or future councils perhaps, you know, start questioning the development of sports fields for young people, what are some of the results that you think we can expect in the community?
So if the parks were developed?
If they weren't?
If they weren't?
Yeah.
Well, I think, just segueing on to a little bit what Ron said, I think we'd end up seeing various minor sports groups having to limit their enrollment, perhaps even at the rep level. Or what might also happen is we'd see some of these minor sport groups perhaps move... Not move, but look out of town at some of the other municipalities to see if they could find sports field time. So, you know, I make no secret of the fact that, to me, a sports field and a park where kids are playing baseball or soccer or whatever sport, I think it's great. I think it's music to my ears. But, you know, music to me is someone else's interference. And so if we continue... If we're going to continue... If we end up continuing to limit development of all of these existing parks, then this council and future councils are going to have to come up with a pile of dough, as I see it, to develop new parks, because they're expensive. And we saw a little bit of that in the staff report. And we already know that from what we've seen about the future costs of the South End facility that we want to get going in the next decade, so... And how far out do you push that capital funding for those when you've got organizations that are already saying, well, just a minute, we can only accommodate so many? So I don't know the answers to those questions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
I just want to hit a little bit harder on the point with regards to... Because you do have a lot of experience outside of baseball. And you mentioned through the committee meeting about the KSA and what their logo is. And I think maybe some of what the mayor was trying to get at is is that mantra that you have from the KSA about building...
True sportsmen make good citizens.
Yes. And so if we decreased the amount of recreational infrastructure that you've eloquently said is the city's responsibility, we may see some of that not happening. Would that be accurate?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
So you're wanting... So the true sportsmen make good citizens?
Yes.
So if we aren't taking our responsibility as a city and building the infrastructure for recreation, would that... That obviously would go against that?
Well, I'm sitting with my friend, Mr. McKellip, and all of us that are involved in sports and all of the volunteers that are involved, we're well aware, without bragging, we're well aware of the service we perform in the city, all sports. And kids playing sports or any activity, kids involved in dancing, kids involved in... Pick your activity. Whatever we can do to enhance that, we should be doing to our utmost. Because ultimately, I think if Chief Larkin were standing here, he would tell you point-blank that the more kids are involved all the way up from a young age, the less likely they are to meet him on a professional basis. So, you know, the facts are clear on that, although I don't have them at my fingertips, but...
That's fair. Thank you.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Brivanovic. Mr. Peg, the mayor brought up your involvement with the Kitchener Sports Association, and Counselor Galloway-Seelock sort of touched on it as well. And again, as councillors, we try and find some balance here. And we've heard that the lights and the late-night sounds could cause some health issues with stress and other things for the residents in the area. And you started to touch on it. But through your experience with minor sports, could you maybe speak of the health and social benefits of kids playing sports?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, I... Again, I'm not an expert, but my own kids played sports. They all did. And all of my friends and associates, for the most part, were people whose kids played sports. I run into people today that I coached when they were Pee-wee's, when they were... And they'll say, you know, it's almost like my wife runs into students that she taught at St. Jerome's. And they say, I remember you. You coached me in tyke. You know, oh, wow, really? Did we do a good job? So... And we're now starting to see as well... My son, this year, stepped away from the Junior Panthers, and he's got the Tier Two Rookie Rep Team. And all of his assistants are players who played, are men now, who played in KMBA as kids. They've all come back. He's got four guys helping them. And two of them played for the Senior Panthers. So they've come back because their kids are now of that age, and they're getting involved. And one of our Senior Panthers players, Jeff Pietrasco, is signing on with KMBA next year to take one of the Bantam Level Rep Teams. So these players, they come up, they come back, they start to give back. It's happening a little... They're a little older now because a lot of them are still playing as young adults to a certain age. But then they start to come back and they start to get involved in the community. And I think that's the important thing. That's the important teacher in sports, is that you become involved. You become engaged in the community. It's just one method, one other thing to do in the community. Some volunteer for service clubs and things like that. You know, everybody's got their own shtick that they want to get involved in as an adult. And I think it's so important today, you know. We've heard the complaints about kids sitting in front of computers and sit... Sitting in front of... I mean, I was sending texts. You know, I've got my silly phone here, and I was sending texts during this meeting. But anything we can do to draw the kids away from their computer screens, I think is a good thing. And we mean no disrespect to the community. Ron explained it very well. KMBA, like every other minor sport, they're going to do everything they can to mitigate the impact on the community. Nobody wants to pick a fight with the community. And the code of conduct he spoke of, that was brought in over 20 years ago when Bob Bisch was the president of KMBA. We were the first minor sport organization, minor baseball, which a lot of these guys, well, Bob would know, to bring in a code of conduct. Kitchener Minor Ball, we were the first ones in baseball in Ontario and set a precedent. So I think that minor baseball, as Counselor Gazola mentioned, all of our minor sports in Kitchener, we have a great track record of being very good corporate citizens. And that's very important to us. It's also very important that our coaches and our players represent the city of Kitchener well throughout Ontario, throughout all the tournaments we play and all the places that we go. We want people around Ontario... When Kitchener shows up for a tournament, well, we could be in trouble because they run good organizations, minor hockey, soccer, all of them. And baseball's no different.
Thank you, Bill.
Counselor Gazola, you're next.
I wasn't going to ask any questions because I have a great deal of respect for you. I thought you were a very fair man. I've known you for a long time, but...
Here it comes.
I really know. You're making it sound... I... Do you not think that most of the people on the other side of the fence have the same respect for minor sports as you do? It's not as if they... And I'm just... It's not as if they're coming here to say tonight, if we don't have lights, we don't... We want to shut minor sports down? No.
No, I don't think that...
No. What do you think? Do they have any real... You know, it's pretty basic, the results of having kids involved in minor sports. I mean, that's... That's... I hate to ever say this word, a no-brainer, but we have seen from society the effects of that. But do you not think that the other side, the other groups, share your thoughts on that matter?
Yes, I do. But I also believe, and I'm not going to make any friends when I say this, I also believe, you know, when we're talking about an issue, there's a pendulum. And so the pendulum can swing way over this side, or it can swing way over to that side. I don't think the fallout from lights and the lighting technology today, from what I saw, what I've seen over at the new soccer complex on Highland Road, the lighting technology today... today compared to Jack Couch Park is night and day, if I can use an analogy. I mean, there's just no comparison. So, but the fallout from lights and sound, I think, has probably been exaggerated a little bit, and I can, I can look, imagine the faces behind me. On the other hand, you know, there's been talk about, minor ball is not totally innocent over the years, I suppose, with people having a little beer in the lawn chair and slipping into the trees for, to relieve themselves. And I agree that that has happened. I agree that it's not right. I'm a little surprised it's never come up before this, if it was such a problem. Nevertheless, minor ball, Ron stood here and said they're taking steps to correct that. Will it be perfect, as he mentioned? I don't know if we're ever going to achieve perfection, no more than we achieve people driving up and down Union Street at that point and observing the speed limits. So, we can do things about parking and everything, but as far as the community goes, just to get back to your question, no question. I, I know they like minor sport. I know they don't want to put us out of business. I know that.
Okay, that's good. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Sorry, it took a long time to answer.
Counselor Singh, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Bill, for your presentation. And I think you made a very succinct point, the importance that, you know, sports can be in the lives of our youth, and the absolute effort that we need to make to ensure that we provide avenue for, for active lifestyle, especially for our youth. Where my concern lies, not to argue the points that you've made, I'm in full agreement with everything that you've said, is ensuring that we've looked at all choices, to see if there could be some other area of our city that could currently allow. And that's not to say that, you know, come next year, a few years from now, as hopefully the enrollment for Kitchener Minor Baseball increases, that this topic may come up again. But the issue is at hand today, talking about if the ball diamonds at Brightup should be lit or not. So, in your assessment of, you know, involve, involvement with the sport, you don't see any other part of the city that where we currently have ball diamonds that are close to the A level that could be lit? That's a question I'm going to ask staff later on, but I thought with your, you know, your involvement, that you would, you would have some, some input on that as well.
Well, okay, let's talk about, let's talk, I sat here a year and a half or so ago, when the proposal was put forward about Southwest Optimus. Is that correct? Southwest Optimus? When the proposal was put forward, long-term, to put it in, put it in the budget. And there are, I believe, are five diamonds there now. And the proposal was to take it down to either three or four. And one of the, on the layout that they had presented at that time, there was a large diamond. I, reading between the lines, I wondered if it, if it possibly meant, you know, shutting down Jack Couch and having us move out to there. So, but who knows? So, Southwest Optimus, certainly, it could be converted. And at the time, I forget what the dollars were, Counselor Gazzola questioned it, but it was, I'm going to guess here, somewhere in the $4 million range to redo everything, not just the diamonds, but all the work around it. And that was, there was considerable discussion at that meeting about whether or not we're going ahead with this project, or whether it's just being put into the long-term wish list-
Right.
-for capital spending. And it was one of the staff members that said, "No, this is in the long-term wish list." So, what's the definition of long-term? Is that three years out? Is that four years out? Is that eight years out? We never quite know, because priorities change. They're shifting all the time. And so-
And that's why I asked that question, because, you know, if we have parts of the city that could accommodate additional fields-
Yep.
...from just two alone, that could allow a larger infrastructure, yes, it comes at a cost, but that cost will end up having to be borne, beared anyways, because of obviously expected increase in enrollment. And that's why I pause a little bit and ask, okay, is, are there alternatives? And I appreciate your answer on my question. And more than anything, I think I've taken away great appreciation of the fields that we have currently, that are A-grade, and that are lit, and that we definitely can't afford to, you know, you know, we have to cherish the value that they provide for, for our sport teams. So, I'll ask additional questions of what I was asking you from staff as well. Thank you.
Counselor Marsh, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you so much for, you know, your comments and your, sharing your experience. Just, my question is about the capacity issue, you know, with your experience of a minor sports organization that's volunteer-run almost entirely, with, I think in this case, a part-time staff person for part of the year. I, I'm wondering what, what steps can be taken to make sure that this organization is accountable to the local residents that are saying that, you know, as much as the code of conduct you're saying is being enforced, it's not, according to the residents that are living right, right nearby. So, nobody's asking for perfection. So, please, you know, nobody's saying that. But, but we're asking, I'm asking, just what, what steps might be taken in an, in an organization that, that could address those issues?
Well, as Ron mentioned, the, the expectations of coaches and parents are clear. In fact, I would go out on a limb and say, they're much clearer today than they were when I was coaching minor ball. And so, it's a process. It's an educational process. Do we come down, and Ron mentioned zero tolerance for certain things. It's only zero tolerance if you get caught. I mean, there's zero tolerance at the Kitchener Auditorium when the Panthers decide to have a little tailgater out in the parking lot, because the property is under one liquor license. And Paul Picard has told us, there's zero tolerance for that. Again, if we get caught. And I've told our guys, "Don't get caught. If you want to do it, I can't stop you, but don't get caught." So, in answer to your question, I think minor ball will continue to come up with solutions and evolve to mitigate any of those issues around conduct, not just at Brightup Park, but at any park. I mean, we've had issues with groups that we've had to follow at Lyons Park, and you go in and you see a bin full of beer cans. And the adult groups aren't allowed to drink beer there either. So, all we can do is report it. All city staff can do is deal with it. When they get those reports, deal with the people involved. And certainly, I think, minor ball, or any minor sport organization, they would want to know about it. So, if, if somebody saw something, they're going to, Ron and his crew are going to want to know about it. So, they can, they can deal with it, because if it was at a certain time, after a certain game, they know who to call.
Okay, thank you. I'll have questions of staff at the appropriate time.
Counselor Evinton.
Bill, one quick question.
Yeah.
You mentioned Woodside. I went through all of what happened at Woodside. Can you elaborate a little on the lights at Woodside and what you said about how they've changed over the years?
Yeah, I can. And at the time, I had a considerable discussion with a staff member involved with that whole project, because I was interested in the lights. And, now, I have limited knowledge, Counselor, so. But there's a term they use called spill. I don't know if they use that. And if you go over to Jack Couch Park and we're playing a game, there's a certain amount of spill that probably goes into the neighbors' backyards on Ottawa Street. I would guess if they wanted, they could sit on their back patio and read the newspaper at 10 o'clock at night, because of the spill from Jack Couch. It's better than it used to be 20 years ago, or in the old days when McKillop played there. But over at the soccer complex at Highland Road, and I went over there one night with a staff member, and we stood beyond the fence. And I wasn't as, as far as from here to the clerk. And it was black. I, I couldn't have, with my glasses on, I couldn't have read a newspaper. That's how little spill there is at the Highland Road facility, soccer facility, because the technology is so much better. And I would expect that at a minor ball diamond, that same technology would probably be employed.
Okay, those are all the questions we have, Bill. Thank you so much for coming in.
Okay.
And our last delegation this evening is Mr. Bob McKillop.
Oh, getting all this fun. Put my hearing aid in. Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I came tonight to express how important minor sport is to members of our community, and to express how concerned I was that Kitchener Minor Baseball and their volunteers throughout this process had come out to be, looking like the bad guy. All the comments that I'm about to make with Mr. Peg, you've just had, so I'm not going to go through that. I would like to say one thing. Kitchener Minor Baseball is known throughout this country for how well it travels, how good its teams are competitively, and more importantly, how good they are as citizens. We work at that. We believe we're good corporate citizens. We think we're good corporate citizens with the neighbors. We respect the neighbors that have brought these things forward, and we don't doubt what they've said is correct. And we're willing to do whatever we can to mitigate those situations. We see we need diamonds. If we don't have diamonds, kids aren't going to play. It's that simple. We respect the decision you're about to make tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Bob, for coming in this evening and, and sharing your thoughts with us as well. So, those are all the delegations that we have, ladies and gentlemen. We'll now open the floor to questions of staff. It is 9:30, and we do have a fair number of things to still get through on the agenda, so if I can just ask council to guide themselves accordingly, unless we want to see ourselves going past 11. Counselor Schneider, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor Bivanevic. I just want to ask staff, there's been some points made about rainfall and ball diamonds. I just want to get an understanding of the challenges for remediating a diamond, the infield, the outfield, to proper safety levels and playability levels after a heavy rainstorm.
Yes, go ahead.
Through you, Mayor. Certainly what we find is on the higher-quality clay-skin diamonds, that it takes longer for those diamonds to recover and get to the high-quality play that, that those diamonds provide. And so, when we look at scheduling, there's a number of factors in terms of cancellations. There are a number of factors that go into making a decision to cancel diamonds as a result of rainfall or forecasted rainfall. So, that includes how often has, and how frequent the rainfall has been leading up to that, and the quality of the diamonds based on, based on weather that we've experienced and play volumes that we've experienced, and then as well as forecasted rain for that period. So, that call is typically made by 3:00 PM in the afternoon.
Okay. And then the time it takes for the field, infield, how long would that take?
It would depend on the volume of rain. Certainly, we've seen fields being able to be playable again the following evening, if there's a rain event. But we've also seen events where they've been out of play, particularly this spring, we had some significant rainfall events and some difficulty in terms of maintaining turf, where, you know, there could be a period of two or three days.
Okay. And just one question, probably for, for you, Ms. McNeil. A point was made about wanting standards for noise levels and noise level measurements. I just wanted to ask you to comment on if we have standards, and if they're all applied evenly by all your bylaw people.
Sure. Through the mayor, we don't have standards for this type of noise. Ministry of Environment sets standards for stationary noise types, so air conditioners, HVAC units, those types of equipment. This type of noise falls under our subjective noise bylaw. So, in order to put standards in place, it makes it difficult, because every situation is different. It's up to the officer's discretion when they go and investigate a noise complaint, whether there's sufficient evidence there to lay a charge and, and to be supported in court, because that officer does have to go to court and bring that charge forward and get support from the court. So, their credibility is on the line as well. But in terms of the noise reads that were done for this report, the general rule of thumb is anything over five decibels is generally too loud. There, there's going to start to be a problem there. So, the noise reads that were taken for this report, none of them showed a variation of higher than five decibels. And again, it was done to just give us an idea of what we were dealing with and the types of volumes that were there. And there were several different things looked at. We looked at the ambient noise, which is just the background noise with no, no, nothing contributing to it. We looked at cars driving by, the sound of a ball being hit by a bat, people cheering, as well as the people leaving at the end of the evening and talking as they were walking past homes. So, all noise reads have to be done from the point of reception, so that is where the person is bothered by the noise, not standing right next to the noise.
Okay, next is Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Are we currently maximizing the diamonds that we currently have during peak season?
Through you, Mayor. So, from a usage and from what we schedule out, the peak season is in high demand. We've actually put the user groups on a hold, so that we've asked them not to add new programs or to increase their intake. Anywhere we could be creative, we, we've put those alternates in place, but we're definitely feeling the pressure from the, the start of the season in May and through early July, so about July 15th.
And how many user groups do we currently try to accommodate on our ball diamonds?
So, regular user groups, we have over 14, and they all play a different level of ball. So, the needs and the requirements of the fields are very unique and different to the users. There are some common areas that we can cross over, but when you look at age, playability, and distance, then we have that, that level. Our pickup leagues are our groups that are actually pushed out to other communities, because we can't accommodate them here for the adult, for the older, I'd say, older teens, the 21 to 26-year-old groups.
So, if we were to light two ball diamonds, irregardless of where they are, we would be able to accommodate more user groups, or the amount of user groups we currently have, but allow for some expanded programming? Or is this one, this, this just getting us to where we need to be now?
It would just get us to where we are now. We had to do some internal shuffling in 2016. So, the groups, not only Kitchener Minor Baseball, but the other groups also had to make some changes in the way they scheduled. Predominantly, we had the luxury for a long time to just schedule Monday to Thursday, but they're using the weekends and they're using the nights, because that's what we need to do to increase the utilization. We went that route first. Now, we're saying we're, we're exhausting that in the, in the main season. We need to now extend some other options, and we're looking for quicker solutions.
And the question was brought up to one of the delegates about the light technology, and I was going to bring this up at the committee, but lighting didn't seem to be a huge, the huge issue from the residents. I heard over and over from the residents that their number one priority is in-game noise. So, I just want to confirm that if we move forward with this proposal, that we'll be looking at the best possible light option that has the least amount of spill and, and least amount of effect on surrounding, the surrounding neighborhood.
Mr. Parrish?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, we'll be looking at the same technology used at Woodside Park that was described earlier.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move the recommendation at the appropriate time and make my comments at that time.
Okay. It'll actually come through the committee report, but Counselor Singh, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. And I think-
And I think Counselor Galloway-Sealock touched on a question I was going to ask regarding, you know, where we're at. And my effort isn't to debate the subject matter. It's really for my benefit to understand where our capacity is currently and for the benefit of the audience, the residents, that oppose lighting of these two ball diamonds for increased time at Becto Park. So you've answered the question already, and I apologize if I'm forcing you to reiterate. But so you're saying, and I'm surprised by your answer a little bit, I thought with these additional two diamonds that we would be able to, you know, at least to hope for increased capacity for more programming, which I think is a good encouragement. But I'm surprised to hear that we really would be closely just meeting our current demand, and that is correct?
Ms. Kugler?
Through you, Mayor. So currently, we are just meeting minimal. We actually have a number of youth at that 21 to 26-year-old level that have gone out to other communities to seek out time. We've also had groups that cannot grow their program and have not been able to host events in the community. Really, they're trying to provide the house league and the rep level at this point, and they're holding back on their wait lists and the registration.
So all the A-level, A1-grade fields that we have are very crucial to us right now. And there's, again, any other fields that would have to be brought up to that standard for a hardball game, again, can't be done without requiring the dollars that are outlined in the report?
Through you, Mayor. So currently, the need for using our A1 diamonds to increase the capacity, you have to remember that there's two different levels. So we have softball and we have hardball. So I think there's been some questions about, some people refer to it as Southwest Optimus and others, Upper Canada. The reason why we're putting conduit in right from the beginning is that we want to be able to increase the time there as well by adding the lighting. That's to meet the needs of the softball. The dimensions are different, the playing field conditions are different. Right now, the greatest pressure is for hardball, but I can tell you that softball is sitting up here in the stands as well because they're also feeling the pressure and they're waiting for the Upper Canada improvements.
Where are some of our fields that are dedicated for hardball that you're saying that we have the greatest pressure on?
So currently, the predominant fields that they use that are clay-skinned are, so they're making use of Jack Couch, they're making use of Lyons, and then they're making use of Bright Up. In addition to that, they also use other secondary B diamonds for their house league program.
And that's where the greatest pressure is right now for increased programming?
For the Level A, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I guess I needed to hear it, and I think the residents needed to hear that as well. I have one more question of Ms. McNeil regarding the bylaw issues. I have great faith with the user groups that they will try to, you know, regulate better conduct. But on our end, is it possible that we can patrol more frequent, more at the end of the games, ensuring that people aren't loitering late at night and, you know, we're managing the behavior issues a little better, especially the fact that we will have taken additional step with having signage as well that better lays out the necessary norms of the park?
Through the mayor, yes, that's completely possible. Our trail bike officers already patrol Bright Up Park, I think, a couple of times through their evening patrols, so we could certainly add that and add it towards the end of the evening so they could keep an eye and monitor it.
Glad to hear that, thank you.
Okay, next we have Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. Some of my questions have already been answered, but Ms. McNeil, if you, sorry, before you sit down. So that's interesting that maybe we can see some more spot patrol. When we, you know, hear that some of the players are getting too loud and getting out of control, and they're being told, well, don't get caught, is there a way that we could go and patrol and just do it at different times and on different days so that it's not a schedule that can be anticipated?
Through the mayor, we could certainly sit down with Ms. Kugler and others and see what that schedule would look like and try to organize it so that staff were spreading those out.
Yeah. So you were here earlier when the delegate was asking if we could find a more standardized way of responding to this type of noise. And you responded earlier already that fixed noise is different than this type of noise. Could you see a potential for a standard that would respond to these concerns?
Through the mayor, I think it would take some thought to think that through because, again, every situation is different. I'm a little apprehensive with charging people that are out cheering for their children when they're playing ball. However, if people are hanging around after the game and creating a nuisance and noise, then that's a different, that's a whole different scenario. So I think we'd have to give it some thought and look at the different types of situations that we could be dealing with and approach it that way.
Okay, thank you. So secondary to this issue, but still relevant, is the fact that unfortunately, through a couple of problems that we had on our end, we did send out some notices a little bit too late, and also, and I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can direct staff to make sure that we prevent those types of problems from happening in the future. Not only that the notices went out too late, but also that there was some misinformation about signing up as a delegate, and I just would like to make sure that we can prevent that type of problem in the future.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. We absolutely hear the concerns with regard to the notification. It's unfortunate that the timing worked the way it did, and we're absolutely committed to reviewing the process. And we have had some internal debriefs in terms of the timeframe and in our commitment to reviewing the process, so yes.
Okay, and while I have you, I have one more question. To what degree have we looked to share the load, share the love of baseball with some of our surrounding municipalities and have a more collaborative approach so that it's not just relying on Kitchener to provide the number of diamonds that are required?
So through you, Mayor. Through the need study that was conducted, we engaged with the city of Waterloo, and I think we heard earlier from KNBA, and I know this is true also of soccer, that the house league, the enrollment is shared, and so the locations of play are shared amongst both Waterloo and Kitchener. And so we have, we know that Waterloo is also looking at their field strategies and have been in communication with them. And I believe Ms. Kugler's team has also reached out to Cambridge as well initially, and I can have her speak to that.
Can you speak up a little? Folks are having a hard time hearing you, and I imagine the viewing audiences have even a harder time.
Okay. So essentially, through the needs assessment, there's been ongoing engagement with the city of Waterloo, and I mentioned that the house league shares membership with both Waterloo residents and Kitchener residents. And so play is dispersed throughout Waterloo and Kitchener. And so that dialogue is ongoing and continues, and we know that Waterloo is also working on their sports strategy, and we will continue to engage with them. And then I just mentioned that there was some initial outreach with Cambridge as well in terms of the needs assessment.
Next, we have Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. Ms. Kugler, just a quick question that came up in one of your responses when you were talking about Kitchener Minor Ball and all the user groups trying to grow their programs. You said that at one point, it was only Monday to Thursday, and through some rejigging and some different strategies, you've expanded that. Can you tell me roughly when that change occurred?
Ms. Kugler?
Through you, Mayor. So at the start of the 2016 season, you may recall that there were a number of images of young youth not being able to play ball and that there weren't fields. Fortunately, our team here worked closely with the actual sports organizations related to baseball and softball and T-ball and blast ball and all the groups to find a way to do it. And Kitchener was able to actually accommodate and make some changes to get the kids that were actually enrolled into the 2016 season. It was there that we really identified that we had a real shortage of fields. Waterloo also went through the same thing, and Waterloo was in the media as well for the inability of having ample space for those sports. In collaboration, the two cities have been working closely together. Waterloo probably had started already in 2015, moving their user groups to use the weekends as well as the Friday nights. And then it was much easier for us to move and encourage our user groups to do the same thing. They realized that they had to be flexible, that we can't just have fields sitting around not being used. And so the peak period of that May to July is where the groups are committed to using it, and we're committed to trying to find them time.
Okay. So I do remember that in 2016. So before 2016, would it be fair to say that the diamonds, for the most part, were mostly active Mondays to Thursdays? And it's only because of this pressure that we've expanded uses to Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays? Or was there always use at Bright Up Park all through the week? Or was there, like, so do you get what I'm getting at? Great, thanks.
So predominantly, Bright Up was used Monday to Thursday in a lot of weekend tournaments, so they weren't scheduled all their regular practices. But now, with the pressure, they've had to move more games onto those weekends in addition to moving some of those practices off to make time available for the games.
Okay, thank you for that. And just because you identify that there's some Kitchener Minor Softball people here, do we have a little news on Upper Canada, or do you want to send that to me offline?
Through you, Mayor. We can speak offline about this, too. You'll see more information about Upper Canada in the coming council meetings.
Yeah, I think we should probably stay focused on this issue this evening.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Gazola, you're next.
Yeah, I had most of my questions answered. I sent them to staff, and although I'm not clear on a number of the issues, I just want to add a couple of questions. Last week, a delegate from the neighborhood mentioned that there's a bylaw or something in Waterloo not allowing lights to go into residential areas that already have, don't have lights. Can you expand, anyone expand on that?
So through you, Mayor. We did reach out to Waterloo following the statement from the delegate to better understand the context in which the statement was made. And it is an excerpt from one of the sections of the report with regards to requirements and constraints for the development of new fields. So essentially Waterloo in there, and it's an excerpt from their City of Waterloo Sports Field Strategy from 2012 to 2031. And essentially Waterloo has recognized that there are constraints, similar to the analysis that we did in terms of the, that there are constraints and the impacts associated with lighting in neighborhoods. And there is no, there's no bylaw, there's no policy, it's just a recognition of the constraints within existing neighborhoods and the impact of lighting fields.
Okay, but it is a recognition that hasn't been mentioned. In the questions that I was asking you in the memo that I sent, I was trying to get a grasp on the numbers, on the numbers of where we're at and where we're going. And I didn't, I don't, I didn't really get a lot of definitive answers, but one answer that I did get is that we're really going to look into this next year when we redo the leisure master plan. That was what I kept getting, that answer. But why would we not set all of this aside until we go through the updating of that master plan that also, from what I understand, dealt with, that you want to look into this whole question of shortage of fields and that? Why are we dealing with it at this point before we have all the information?
So through you, Mayor. As Ms. Kugler mentioned, in 2016, we knew that we had a problem in terms of capacity within, an existing problem in the capacity of our current diamonds. And so staff conducted a needs assessment and identified the need for an immediate 1.5 diamonds and further over the course of a five-year period, an additional six diamonds. And with that, with the information we had, we had a fair amount of confidence in terms of the data and both the immediate need and the short-term need. What the LFMP will do is look towards those longer-term trends across all sporting areas to look at what are our longer-term needs, and that speaks to really the acquisition of lands to support growth within various sports and lighting strategies across, again, all sports. So it's, the LFMP will be a more comprehensive, the Recreation Leisure Facilities Master Plan will be a more comprehensive review. However, we are confident in the data we have today that we have a problem today, and we need to address that problem unless we choose to turn away folks that are interested in playing ball.
Well, you again mentioned something to me, like, we keep talking about fiscal responsibility here, and we really aren't clear on what the costs are, and that's something you're going to look at a little closer. Just a final little question. In the report that you sent back on the questions that I had asked, there was an attachment to it that had a lot of tweets on it. What was the purpose of that?
So through you, Mayor. So what Counselor Gazola is referring to is information we received from our communications team in terms of the feedback we were receiving from the community through social media feeds, and so we wanted to share that with council.
Was it relevant?
I would suggest that all information related to the discussion around ball diamonds are relevant to the decision being made tonight.
But it was pretty much one-sided and without any knowledge of where those people live or pay their taxes. So I just, I wondered the relevance of it, and...
That's something, I guess, each member of council will have to decide for themselves, Counselor Gazola. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. I wanted a bit of clarification from questions at committee. On page 13-10, the staff report, there's really sort of three options. And the second option, I really wasn't clear on at committee, but it was upgrading and lighting three other diamonds. Now, as I understand, these diamonds are in all, they would be in all different locations?
Through you, Mayor, yeah, that's correct. They'd be at three different locations.
Okay, so again, isn't it possible that if we were to refuse this lighting upgrade, we would just really be spreading the problem potentially three times the problem to other areas of the city?
Through you, Mayor. We evaluated the impact to neighborhood as part of our criteria for selecting Bright Up as our preferred alternative, and certainly there will be an impact to the other three locations.
Okay, great. And given that I've just heard there's going to be a large demand in the not-too-distant future, I didn't get the response clear at committee, but even if we go ahead with lighting the diamonds at Bright Up, I'm assuming that we're going to see this recommendation, given it's the lowest-cost one at an additional 1.2 million at some point in the future. Is that a safe assumption?
So through you, Mayor. So in terms of future, we will need to evaluate options related to future diamond needs through the Leisure Facilities Master Plan and look at, you know, both neighborhood impact, operating cost, capital cost. Given the growth that we're seeing and growth in other sports as well, we anticipate that there will need to be future investment.
Okay. And just one final question, then. I know, just again, looking at that same page, I want to be clear. So the light... So the lighting upgrade will be equivalent, if lighting upgrade at Brightup Park will be equivalent to building one brand-new diamond at a cost of about half a million dollars. And if we were to just go the exact alternate route and build one brand-new diamond and light it, it would cost us over $6 million.
Yep, Mr. Paris.
Through you, Mayor, that's correct. That's the information.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions, and they follow up on, to the question that Counselor Davy was asking. So if I understand correctly from what you said, this is an initial step that we're going to take. If we weren't to take this one, then potentially the choices are either go in greenfield development, which is the most costly, or develop in a number of other parks throughout the rest of the city, correct? Sorry?
That's correct.
Okay. And we may need to visit those in the future, but that would really be determined in the future, subject to the Leisure Facilities Master Plan, correct?
That's correct. What I do want to say is we, you know, you heard about the hardball constraints, there's also capacity concerns with softball. And so recognizing that conduit is being placed at Upper Canada Park or Southwest Optimus, so they, with the future lighting of those fields, there's additional capacity on the softball needs.
And can you share with us the other parks that you're looking at and what, or that you've mentioned? I think you mentioned three, and what parts of the city they're in, just so that, I think it's important that everyone understands the full picture and in the fullness of time?
Certainly. So the three parks that were assessed in terms of suitability for lighting as the next potential candidates were Voizen, Green Gable, and Rittenhouse.
Okay. And just for everyone to be, what part of the city are they in, just roughly?
So, actually, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Paris. I'm familiar with...
Okay, not fair for you, too. Mr. Paris.
Through you, Mayor. I'll see if I can buy words right here. Rittenhouse is Ward 6, Voizen Ward 5, and Green Gable Ward 7, and it's in the northwestern part.
Okay. And I guess the last question I have is really one more for probably Ms. Kugler. Ms. Kugler, I know in a couple of the other sports, we have a policy that council, not a policy, but I guess a philosophy statement that council adopted around every kid can play. And I know that exists in soccer, I know that exists in hockey. Would this really be moving us towards an environment where every kid can play in baseball as well? Is that really what we're trying to achieve here?
Through you, Mayor, yes. That's exactly what we're trying to achieve. So currently, it's for baseball and softball. We're also watching it with soccer and some of our other outdoor sports as well.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions. I'm presuming everybody else is here for comments. Okay, so I'm going to come to you, Counselor Ionitis, to bring the motion forward.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. It's been moved by myself and seconded by, obviously, you're not going to do it, Counselor Galway Seelock. That item number... 13, sorry, thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. My list of speakers has lit up like a Christmas tree. So I'm just, again, we're at 10 o'clock, and just want to remind people to govern themselves accordingly in terms of time. I anticipate we're going to be going past 11. Counselor Singh, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll try to be short with my comments. When I approached this, especially tonight, I was very much siding with the concerns of the area residents. And that's not to say that I'm not conscious of, you know, of the issues that they bring to us. I think they're real, they're relevant. But at the same time, it gives me a little bit, you know, aspect of pause when I hear the comments through the delegations like, you know, Mr. Peg and Ron representing a user group that is, you know, already dealing with issues of capacity. I based most of my emphasis on looking at alternative areas, and staff have clearly laid out that though, although those options exist, the three parks, and I'm glad you, Mr. Mayor, outlined where they would be, come at a great cost, or a higher cost than the two diamonds at Brightup. I can speak for at least one option in Ward 6, Rittenhouse Park, although if that was an option, I necessarily wouldn't have too much of an issue with the way the park is laid out, is well, decent setbacks from the neighboring properties. So that's not where my concern lies, but the issue is of capacity and meeting that capacity at the lowest cost possible. And again, the fact that we already have a problem with existing capacity, and these two ball di, lit ball diamonds will just allow us to, get us to where we need to be, means that soon we'll probably have to start entertaining the option of lighting these other three parks that were, that were proposed. My only encouragement would be to staff to start communicating early on enough when we approach that, so that the neighborhood can be well-versed as to the need and the requirements of the sport, as well as ensuring that their concerns are well-captured ahead of time, so that we're not hearing similar comments that people were caught off guard. We know the direction that we're heading. It's not to say that we need to be resistant of it, but we need to be conscientious of the concerns of the residents, so that as planning comes forward, it's done to mitigate the concerns of the area residents. Really, where I'm approaching this is, we're supporting the staff recommendation on two bases. One is, you know, I have great respect for our staff from bylaw, that they will do every effort possible, ensuring that the park is well-monitored after the, after the games, ensuring that the issues that were arisen with loitering, noise after the park, parking, they will be better managed. And I have absolute confidence in Kitchener Minor Baseball and their effort to make sure that they better regulate conduct around the games before and after, as well as the fact that we are absolutely in desperate need of A1 field, fields that are lit, and we really have no other option, and we need to cherish of all the diamonds that we have currently. So I will be supporting, with reluctance, but I will be supporting.
Counselor Galway Seelock.
Yeah, we've heard from staff that we are maximizing the potential of our current diamonds, that we last year looked at other measures to maximize the diamonds even more through scheduling. And we're at the point where we've heard from one user group, even though we know there's another one here, but we've, we've heard from one out of 14 user groups that we aren't meeting their capacity and that they actually have kids on a waiting list that they've had to turn away. And then we also hear from staff that we are sending groups out of town, some of our user groups, when it comes to diamonds. I know there, a number of years ago, we were dealing with soccer in a similar situation, which we still are deficient in soccer fields as well. But what we've been doing is turning, where possible, our soccer fields into artificial turf fields, because we're able to maximize that space much better, and that's been helping us along the way. This is the exact same concept, except it puts lights on a diamond. And so I strongly believe in the importance of getting kids involved in sport, and turning kids away, for me, is not an option. I understand that the rest of the diamonds will need to be assessed through the Leisure Facilities Master Plan, but right now, we have a need of 1.5 diamonds, and we're able to do that with $600,000. We can gain 1.5 diamonds, whereas if we were just to build one new diamond, it would be $6 million. That's a huge difference. We get more for $600,000 than we get for $6 million. That's pretty significant in my mind. I heard what all the residents said, I listened, I appreciate the time and input that you've given. But we also heard, like, there is going to be change for the residents. We also heard today that you've had quiet time from this past week with the diamonds and the weekends, and since mid-July, that you haven't had some of the noise late on the weekends. And if I understand correctly, peak time is May to July, so it's going to be more, there's going to be more noise, and people are going to be there longer. But from mid-July until October, there's the potential to have some, I'll say, dark days or quiet days, where the diamonds aren't being utilized as much. And we have a user group here who's committed to help. And if between mid-July and October, if they have games, I'm pretty sure they're not going to schedule them at 9 or 10 o'clock at night, if they have diamonds available to them at 4 or 5 in the afternoon. And so I really do understand that there's change. We also heard in committee last week that there was some reluctance when we did the same thing at Lions Arena, and while I used to represent that area many years ago, there was one individual who would always remind me if the lights weren't turned off. And, but since technology has changed, and now really it is either a phone call or an email and a flip of a switch, and so I think some of those concerns can be alleviated. So I wholeheartedly, no reluctance, wholeheartedly support this. I think it's the right move, and I know that staff are going to do their best job to mitigate any issues that they have in the, in the area where the residents are concerned.
Counselor Fernandez.
I certainly heard the residents about their concerns with the expanded game times if we add the lights to Brightup Park. I heard those noise when I sat on that Sunday afternoon in the backyard of Angela and Sean, and this was only a snapshot of what they experienced on a regular basis. We also heard from Ron Moibrook about what has been happening to KNBA. However, they've attempted to handle the many issues raised by the residents. He acknowledges that there is still work to do and made a commitment to do so as KNBA grows if the lights are put in the park. This is a very challenging and difficult situation between our existing residents in and around the park, and the greater community needs to offer sport to our residents, to our young people, to our youth, and even to our adults. Is there a balance that we can reach here? Possibly. But I think for the residents, it may not be enough. It may be too little for them. But I also, as I listened today to 570 News Talk rant and rave show, I heard many supporters of the lights in Brightup Park. There was only a few, but that's always the case, right? When you support something, you're wholeheartedly out there talking about it. I believe that we need to look at the greater community needs here. I know this is so difficult for the residents around the park, and I want you to know that I've heard what you said, and I know that many nights, your peace and quiet doesn't start until 9:00 p.m., and that's not much time. But I also heard today, tonight, which was surprising to me, was that it's really more recent. It's not been, you know, for five years. It's actually been the last couple of years that we've expanded these nights. And we heard from Ron that there have been times when there are no games happening. That's going to change. I think that that means that there, if we put the lights there, we are going to want to make full use of those diamonds more and more. The season is pretty much over for the House League by the end of July, but we know that it's going to continue through August, September, and even October. That means six to seven days a week of noise and ball, and that's going to be difficult for the residents. I sat here and watched some representatives of Kitchener Minor Ball, as I did at committee, and I applaud you. I mean, it's really not exciting, sitting here, listening to a bunch of adults talk about stuff. So kudos to all of you who sat, and to the young gentleman who came later on, to be here to support your minor ball. I think that that's wonderful, and you should definitely get a pat on the back and a thank you from the adults here in the room. I think that KNBA can and will work with the community to mitigate the concerns for the neighborhood. And I'm, I'm going to listen to the rest of my colleagues' comments today. It's going to be a very difficult decision for me tonight.
Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be fast as well. I've mentioned a couple of times in my ward, we had very similar problems at Woodside Park, at Highland and Queen, similar neighborhood protests about lighting, noise, bad behavior, urination, and other soccer activity. We solved the issue by involving staff and residents in extensive meetings, changes in lighting and fencing, more extensive meetings, changes throughout that process that also addressed bad behavior. In that case, it worked. And whether or not lights are in place at Brightup, I think that kind of meeting and those kind of sessions should certainly take place. Residents have my sympathy and support in relation to noise issues as well. I live on the edge of Victoria Park, and believe me, I know about noise. On the question of lights and noise, I also support residents and appreciate the constant bombardment and use of a very tired, overused question, which says, "Well, if you don't like Brightup, if you don't like lights, if you don't like Victoria Park, why do you buy your home next to a ball diamond, or why buy your house in Victoria Park?" And the answer, of course, is that lights were not there when Brightup residents bought their houses, most of them. And most Victoria Park residents did not have to cope with huge festivals and other loud activities every single summer weekend when they bought their homes. However, after listening to all arguments, tonight and last week, I do support the installation of these lights. And I would encourage, although it's not going to satisfy a lot of residents, I would encourage ongoing increased efforts by KNBA coaches, baseball enthusiasts, to increase respect for that Brightup neighborhood, and step up meaningful efforts to control unnecessary light spillage, noise, poor behavior, and enforce that code of conduct that has been mentioned with zero tolerance. Thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
I'd like to remind my colleagues that this is actually, this is not a question of the lights spilling over. This is a question that can, of in-game noise, which cannot be mitigated. Parking, which has been an ongoing concern, and unwanted behaviors, changing behaviors is really quite difficult to, if not impossible, to completely change. As the mom of three boys who do play House League baseball, I want to also make sure that everyone is clear that KNBA, the Kitchener Minor Baseball Association, is not being pitted as the bad guy. I, I know that everyone, the neighbors, as well as council members, all support minor ball, as has been made clear. I want to make it clear as well that we've, we've heard from the neighbors who are most affected by the noise, and we've heard almost unanimously from those who are directly beside the park, that the impact of the noise is really quite dramatic. It's a, it's a very negative impact on them. And so as their counselor, I have listened to their concerns, and I, I want to advocate for, on their behalf, for us to really reconsider putting the lights in, because we really need to make sure that we remember that... because we really need to make sure that, uh, we remember that we don't, we don't live beside the ballpark that's getting, that's being proposed to have lights. Uh, perhaps the, uh, KMB, uh, would be able to mitigate some of the concerns, yes. But there is really, as I said, no way for them to mitigate all of the concerns that have been, uh, raised, and that is why, uh, I cannot support this recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Yonetski.
I grew up, uh, playing baseball, uh, back in my younger years. I even played here in Kitchener, uh, in my twenties and thirties, and did enjoy it. And of course, I can appreciate the sounds of the, of the game and the excitement and going to the games. I, uh, I also had two, two sons who also played minor baseball as well, just limitedly, but, uh, they did play and, uh, attended their games and cheered them on like any other parent, uh, would. I, uh, did visit the, uh, the Diamonds on, uh, two, three different occasions, sat in the backyard at one of the residences to listen to the noise, walked through the park just to see what the, uh, the fans were doing. They were just sitting there, brought their little picnic tables, picnic blankets, I should say, and little coolers and some snacks, and were enjoying the game. They were all very respectful. I didn't see anything wrong. I, I trust they were drinking appropriate beverages. I saw a lot of water, but there was also containers that were unidentifiable, but I assumed that they were good drinks. Um, I also note from last week that, uh, we had discussions that, uh, the lights were removed and the Ball Diamond official home on Queens Boulevard was closed, and there was a potential expansion that we could have done to accommodate, uh, this type of, uh, Diamond as well. I heard both groups talk about, both the baseball people as well as the residents, and they both had very good arguments. Uh, the, I, I believe the association along the city, um, have done good diligent work, although there's issues that needed to be addressed, and they have taken good steps to do it, and they are addressing them, and I think they will follow through and make the best of, uh, the situation. The two issues that they can't really address is, well, one would be the noise that comes from the ballgame. I mean, just quiet them, then all of a sudden there's a homerun, and it cheers, and et cetera. It's, uh, it's part of the game. It's, it's wonderful. But the residents hear it, and it's all day long, up and down, up and down. And if you bring lights in, I'm just extending it another two, three hours into each evening. So having considered both sides of the, uh, the story and both sides of the arguments, um, I'm gonna have to side with the residents.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Uh, first of all, I just wanna thank everyone for coming in today. Shows that this is an issue dear to both sides of, of the fence on this. Um, don't, I don't make my decision lightly when I make my decision. First of all, another thing I want is I've been, it's been raised by several members in, in the community to me that, um, Kitchener Minor Baseball Association was dr- it was dragged through the mud. And, uh, I, I, I think, uh, from my dealings with, with the organization and dealing with the members there, it's been nothing but professional, so I wanna just reinforce that, that the organization's first class in my mind. Um, but now back to dealing with the issue. I think it's pretty, it's pretty simple, and it's, I'm gonna make it this really short. It's a matter of pure economics and being fiscally responsible, and it's a matter of how the city's gonna be growing. And you have to view it as a community as a whole. And to me, the economics is overwhelmingly in support of, of putting in lights, and that's the way I'm gonna be looking at it.
Yeah, I too wanna start off by saying this is a discussion that's been going on for a long time. And it isn't now, it's not until tonight at the 11th hour that we're really getting the feel for how members of council are going to vote on this issue. I would have liked to have seen that, uh, preliminary votes come out earlier so that people could, uh, maybe express their points more, a little better. But having said that, there, there, there are two sides to this issue, and I, I think both sides have, have acted very responsibly and, uh, have, uh, both sides have done their homework. Uh, there's been, and, uh, there's been a lot of good engagement. The, uh, and, and the, and the other side too, we have staff who have, uh, I have no, um, concerns with staff. I respect what staff have done. Uh, I think I'm a little skeptical of, of some of the responses from staff. Uh, one of the things that concerns me is this sudden fiscal responsibility that, uh, we're, we're getting into. I find the, uh, the information from staff was very limited. Uh, really, there, there were, there were three or four lines dealing with, with the finances involved with it. And, and, and I keep hearing this figure of $6 million thrown out. That, that's basically been thrown out. Just there, if you, if you read the footnote to that figure, it says, "There's a high degree of uncertainty associated with land and construction costs." So we need to, uh, we need to spend a little more time on, on, on actually what the costs, uh, what the true costs that are involved. This, to me, it, it's not a question of NIMBY, it's not a question of, of, of traffic and parking and, and on the other side, it's not, on the other side of the story, it's not a question of, uh, of the importance of, of minor sports. It's an issue here that the neighborhood just wanna keep their neighborhood the same as it's been. They're not saying do away with Bright Up Park, close it up. They know that they bought there, they know what it's, what it's like. And all they're asking for is, we wanna just leave it the same. Leave it that things shut down at nine o'clock. Uh, when, when you get into these discussions, well, I'm sure they've come up with a lot of arguments, and we run into this on every, on big issues, when there's a zoning change, one of the first things people say are traffic, parking, and all that. Well, they're doing, they're doing their best to preserve their neighborhood the way it is. And on the other side, I, minor sports are, they're, they're absolutely doing what they should be doing, and they're doing a good job at it. I do take some exception to, to the fact that, you know, the, there's no question about the value of minor sports and, and what it does. I, having spent, uh, over 30 years involved with Kitchener Minor Hockey and, and having four children and 13 grandchildren, I know the benefits of, 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 of minor sports and what it does for our future citizens. That, that's, that's not a question here. The question here is maintaining the neighborhood. And this is the year of neighborhood. I, when it comes right down to it, uh, there, there have been a lot of good points on both sides, but I'm, I'm, I have always erred on the side of going with the neighborhood. And we have a majority of the people in that neighborhood do, do, do not want the lights. So I'm, I, I'm also, uh, I'm sure that, that we can work around this. I know that staff can, 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 can come up with, with, with different ways of dealing this, this issue without robbing the bank. It's, the people love their neighborhood, they wanna keep it that way. Again, and repeat, they're not saying close down minor sports, close down Bright Up Park, just let's leave it the way it is right now. We enjoy that. We all, all of us in our neighborhoods want things to basically stay the same. We don't want a big, huge apartment building going up beside us, and we don't want lights. I, again, I will err on the side of, of supporting the neighborhood.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Uh, I wanna thank everyone who came forward to speak. Uh, the residents, you brought forth some legitimate concerns about light and noise. Everything was well presented. Uh, I have a strong belief that staff are gonna address these concerns now and in ongoing seasons. Uh, I, I feel the KMB has come forward and, and, you know, accepted responsibility for some past shortcomings and a, and a strong willingness, uh, to correct them ongoing. And I'm impressed with the residents' offer to dialogue with the KMB and the KMB enthusiastically accepting, uh, that, to be able to work together. I think, uh, staff have come up with a great plan to maximize current facilities before building new ones. It's good fiscal responsibility. It's good value for our tax dollars. Uh, it impresses a city, it, it addresses a citywide need in a very responsible manner. Now, there will be change in the Bright Up Park neighborhood if this goes through, but I feel the KMB and our staff are gonna do everything to make that change as palatable as possible.
Counselor Davey.
Thank you. Uh, I, this is really, like, a big part of this, is this is an infrastructure issue. And as we all know, all municipalities have infrastructure issues, and it's, it wasn't so long ago that we were reaching out to senior levels of government and continue to do so to help us with our infrastructure issue. So one thing that we cannot do is to continue to build new infrastructure that we're utilizing at less than, at peak efficiency. So we can argue the costs, um, all day long. Staff came up with a number, and yes, they say there's a high degree of uncertainty at $6.4 million, more than 10 times the cost. If they're off by 50%, it's still $3.2 million. It doesn't matter what, how you look at this. It's not an option. It's just simply not an option, um, to look at it from that, that perspective. This is a situation where we need to spend, I think, some political capital to save some actual capital. I would agree 100% that this issue is about the decision between maintaining a neighborhood, at least as far as noise is concerned, because I think many of the other issues can be addressed, versus turning children away from sports. This, I'm sorry if anyone disagrees with that fact, but we've heard from the delegation, we've heard from our own staff, that we are already turning children away from sports. And if we don't implement this year, if we don't vote against, for this now, we will certainly be turning children away, more children away from sports next year. And all I'm gonna say about it is that I am not sitting in this chair to turn more children away from sport.
Any other comments? If not, I'll, uh, make my own. Um, I too wanna thank, uh, all of the delegations on, on both, um, from both viewpoints of, of this issue for, for coming in both today and last week to share your viewpoints with us. And in particular, I wanna acknowledge the young people who are here today and the ones who were here, um, last week for, uh, being patient, listening, and, uh, hopefully, uh, through all of this, gaining, uh, an appreciation of, uh, the democratic process and, uh, how important it is for the way our community functions. This is a challenging issue, as you've heard a number of my colleagues say. It's, uh, it's one that requires us to balance the concerns of the neighborhood, the needs of the KMB as an organization, and the needs of young people in, in, in general. And it's one that is not uncommon for us to, to have to deal with, because we've had to deal with it, um, on other issues where, um, you know, whether we're talking minor soccer, minor hockey, um, and some of the challenges of providing the infrastructure facilities that are necessary to support, uh, those groups as well. It, it saddens me sometimes when I, when I hear, um, the reference to neighborhoods, um, and, eh, and the neighborhood strategy and the importance of neighborhoods being used, um, as, as a reason to, to say no to things. Because in my view, this council and this community never, uh, turned to the neighborhood strategy, uh, for that reason. In fact, I would argue, we created the neighborhood strategy for a very different reason, for a way of finding ways to build neighborhoods, to build people, to build community, to find ways for people to interact with each other, to talk to each other, and to, to build a, a stronger community overall together. Last week, we heard from, from Mr. Peg talk about some of the, uh, other issues where we've, uh, in the past, heard concerns from community, like the, uh, the, the Ball Diamond at Lions, like the Bingo Hall and so on, and where there were a lot of, uh, concerns that, that came up ahead of time, and in the end, they proved not to be true. There's no question in my mind, there are some issues that need to be worked on. And I think we heard from some very committed volunteers this evening that they're willing to do everything within their power to, to do that. They need all of our help collectively to, 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 to make that happen. And I'm hoping that regardless of how this decision goes this evening, that in fact is, is what's gonna happen. I will be supporting the motion to go ahead with the Ball Diamonds, uh, this evening. I believe, as I have in the past with both minor hockey and minor soccer, in the philosophy of every kid can play. And that means making the, 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 the difficult decisions, whether it's finding funding resources, making decisions around, um, various pieces of infrastructure and so on. Uh, and in this case, the, the lighting that we're talking about, it means making those decisions so that, in fact, we can be successful in seeing that move forward. I think we heard this notion of, and I will, I will make it neutral, true sports people, true sports people do make good citizens. And, uh, I, I truly believe in that. And whether it is through sport, through arts and culture, through activity, whatever it is, it's a much better alternative for our young people rather than, uh, what the alternatives are. And the alternatives are, quite frankly, looking at things like kids getting involved in vandalism, kids, you know, getting involved in, in, in crime and, and B and Es and different things like that. That's not the kind of society that, that I wanna be part of, of building. And so it means we all need to make some compromises so that we can build the kind of community that ultimately we're all going to be proud of. So I, I again wanna thank everyone for, for your input this evening and into this process. And, uh, in the end, I hope everybody will, will roll up their sleeves, um, to help this become a, a success from, from all sides of the equation. Yep, recorded vote has been called. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, for coming in this evening. Uh, we'll now move on, uh, with our agenda. We have, uh, one delegation for Committee of Adjustment, uh, application, item B3, Ms. Michelle Jennings. Is Ms. Jennings still here? No, I don't think Ms. Jennings is here any longer. Um, so we'll now move on to the tenders. And Ms. Palmer's here. Somebody wanna move the tenders? Move the Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Uh, any questions on the hydro vac? Is that some of the hydro vac, Counselor Gazzola? Okay, any questions on cap and tree? Counselor Yonetski.
Just back to the, uh, hydro vac, a clarification you've got in the recommendation Calgary, Ontario. I think it's meant Calgary, Alberta, as, as a correction. There is no Calgary in Ontario.
That is probably correct. I don't think we've annexed Calgary yet.
So just a matter of correcting your problem.
Okay, thank you. That correction will be made. Uh, my apologies, I didn't take a second or, uh, Counselor Fernandez, thank you. Um, any questions on, uh, tree stumping and turf restoration? Is that yours, Counselor Gazzola? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, uh, I, I would, wanted to give a bit of an update as to where we stand with that Emerald Ash Bor. Uh, one of the questions I wanna know, are, are all the trees, uh, now removed? And is this the stumping for the last few trees?
Who can help us with that? Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I actually can't help you with that, but I'd be happy to follow up with council afterwards.
Well, okay, I, I think, that's fine. I think I would like to, I was hoping staff would bring us a report sometime as to where we stand with the, with the whole issue. The, the question I have though, there seems to be a, a, a... The question I have though, there seems to be a substantial increase, 18 to 20% for the, for the price now, and I'm not sure I clearly understood why.
Ms. Palmer, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we had a very aggressive pricing in our previous contract. That contractor chose not to renew this contract with the city because it was not beneficial to them. We fully expect that the pricing we're seeing is actually reflective of the market.
Okay. That's fine.
Counselor Fernandez on this one? Counselor Singh on this one? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm glad Counselor Gazola has asked for an update. It would be helpful, especially speaking of Ward 6, it was a wide area that trees were cut, and I can speak to actually a few trees that had been left behind or not stumped. So just getting an overall update may be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Palo Alto Firewall, any questions? Swim 21, any questions? Counselor Gazola on that one?
No, it's, I did highlight that both this one and the last one had a $268,000 surplus. I trust that'll get, where, where will that go, that surplus?
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted within the report, it remains in the account to fund future projects.
To fund? Do we know those future projects, or do we have a list of those? Is the money just sitting there so that...
Well, Counselor Gazola, the same sort of information that's been shared with council previously, so there's a number of projects that have large amounts of, you know, significant amount of funds and, and projects get covered out of them. And at the end of the day, once, if there's an opportunity for a capital closeout, staff bring those forward at budget time. I don't know if there's anything else to add, Mr. Chapman, or...
I'm just asking what, we've got a quarter of a million dollar surplus. Do we have, do we have projects that are listed for...
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor. The Stormwater Master Plan outlines the projects. You may recall that the master plan had a deficit of approximately $40 million worth of projects that were unfunded.
I know that, but here, well, it's not just $40 million to use, we got to put names to those projects. That's fine.
Well, at the appropriate time, those will come forward like, like this is, this evening. Okay.
And then what the problem is, when it's too simple, when there's money left in the pot, to find money for whatever you want to do, when maybe there should be a little more discussion about it. That's fine, carry on.
Okay, Swim Block 61. This one, sorry, Counselor Singh on Swim 21? Okay, go ahead.
No, just to the point that Counselor Gazola is making, I don't think that's necessarily the case, but for process anyways, if staff can quickly comment, would it be too onerous when a report is written and we're seeing a deficit or surplus? Just outline the next upcoming project as this, so that way it just doesn't raise any questions. It's letting us very clear when we're $40 million in deficit of overall projects, but still, for clarity and transparency so that questions don't get raised for the sake of it.
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That would require some extra work on our part, but I'm happy to commit to looking into it and seeing if it's possible that we can identify...
Whenever it's easy to do so, I think it's a good practice.
Okay, if you want to click in, Counselor Gazola? Go ahead.
No, in the, in the past, the average spend for this has been $183,000. Now we're, we're jumping it up to 269,000. What, why is that?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor. So you may recall that there was a, a report that was brought to CISC on February 8th, which did a pilot for the double handling of sediment from ponds. And so this is relying on trucking and disposal at an offsite landfill site. So there's variability in that cost, so depending on what the quality of the material is, based on testing results. This is a lot cheaper though than the single handling process that was outlined in those two options.
Ms. Palmer, did you want to add something? No? Okay, go ahead. Counselor Gazola, is that it?
Well, that's it, but why then would we say that in the past, the average spend was 183,000?
Mr. Redman, go ahead.
Through the mayor. It's, it's based on quantity of material, where the landfill site is located in the contract, based on the toxicity or non-hazardous nature of the material. So there's a number of factors that are involved in the sediment removal.
Is that it?
I guess that's it. That's a 25% increase. Maybe we, maybe we get less of it towed away this year or something, but...
Okay, moving on to Grenville Avenue. Sorry, cured-in-place sanitary sewer lining is first. Counselor Fernandez. Go ahead.
Not really a question. Appreciation for response from staff about this. Would have been really helpful, I think, if we could know how many meters of pipe and what, how this will increase the life of our pipes. Ms. Palmer was able to tell me that this will increase the life of our pipes by 50 years, and we're hoping to do 2,016 meters of pipe. And I think that's important. If we could maybe include that information in, in the, in the report, it'll avoid those kind of questions.
Okay, Grenville Avenue, any questions? No? Landscapes?
No questions, sir.
Okay. If you can click in, Counselor Gazola?
Project there is 78% over what we've got budgeted. That's quite a variance. When do we, when do we ever stop to say, hey, maybe we've got to do something different? Or we...
Who'd like to take that question? Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor. So this original budget was set through an issue paper that was done based on very preliminary information. When we actually tendered the report, there are a number of factors that have resulted in it being slightly higher. It was within the range of our pre-engineering design costs. At the time of the year, it is relatively low-value work, and it, a lot of contractors are busy with a lot of projects. So there are a few factors in this, but it is a time-sensitive project because there have been frozen pipes. There is some lead sections of pipe there as well.
Well, I can appreciate that, but shouldn't, when we bring something forward that has a 78% variance, should we not at least mention a few of these things that are causing that?
Through the mayor. Cynthia and I chatted about this, and we're going to look at ways to better estimate at the preliminary phases.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I didn't understand that.
So when we preliminarily, preliminarily set the budgets, we're looking at better ways to set that budget to be more reflective of the, of the actual cost of work.
Is that it, Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I have a question just on number 10, whenever we get there.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Any questions on number nine? Counselor Yonetski? Are you on number nine, or? Number eight? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Yonetski.
Yeah, thank you. Similar to questioning of Counselor Gazola and the response of Mr. Redman, this 191,000, 192,000, so are we going to raid another kitty to pay this off, or how does that work?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, we have an account set aside to do this when there's variance on this type of work. So it's, it's paid out of that account.
Any questions on number nine? Number 10, Counselor Gazola?
Well, there are a couple of questions. I would just like to highlight, in, in both nine and 10, the AODA costs seem to be such a large part of that, of those projects. And is, is this something that's just been, this has just been sprung on us recently by, by the, by the province. Do we, have we ever attempted to get some support from the province because of these increased costs that we're incurring to meet the provisions of this AODA? Because there's substantial increases.
It's AODA, and it's the accessibility...
AODA, yes. What did I say? IODA?
AODA, yes.
AODA, I pronounced it wrong. I, I guess this doesn't need to be dealt with tonight, but it is, again, another downloading from the province. Are we, is there any, are we being compensated for that at all, or...
Ms. Fletcher?
So certainly, if there are any grants that are available, staff will always look into tapping into monies available. This was a major change in the building code a number of years ago, so we see it in parks and play spaces, and we'll see it in buildings as well.
We're seeing it, but is anybody helping us out from the senior levels of government? I guess that's my question. On item number 10, we have three playgrounds going on, and I would have expected we'd be doing similar work with all three. The first two come in at 59,000 and 58,000, and the third one that happens to be in Ward 3 comes in at 44,000. Is that equity, or? I don't, I don't mean to be parochial here, but what's the difference?
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the mayor. The difference can be the size of the land, the number of components. When we do community engagement, it can be related to the types of things that the, the neighborhood or their community are looking for in their park.
Counselor, is that it, Counselor Gazola?
Yes, that's it.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
So these parks are all rehabs, right? They're not new parks?
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the mayor. I use the word park, they're actually playgrounds, and they are replacement of existing playgrounds.
Right, sorry. So that, that would be why there may be a little extra required from, with respect to accessibility, because they're not currently accessible?
Through the mayor, that is correct. They're, I, I believe in the 15 to 20-year range, in terms of replacement.
Okay, so that, that could be why there's some additional costs required specifically for, to meet the requirements of AODA, because they currently don't meet those requirements.
That is correct.
Yeah. I just want to make a quick comment, just with regards to accessibility. I think it's really important for all our parks to be compliant with AODA requirements, not only for those who have varying needs, but for all children so that they're accessible for everybody. And I think that it is our responsibility to make sure that we're covering those costs.
Okay, and I do know just on that, and I've raised this previously, I know there's been a request or a concern raised that we should consider having some parks or playgrounds within the city where the playground is actually fenced in, because we do have situations, particularly with autistic kids sometimes, that they tend to, to be runners, and it would help parents. It's been raised with me, and I know I raised it at council previously, so I'm not sure if staff are looking at that, but as we look at some of the new ones in the future, we can consider that? Ms. Fletcher?
Through the mayor. I know that staff have that on their list of a consideration, and I can certainly take the comment back to staff.
Yeah, I think, I mean, obviously not everyone needs to, but I think if we can probably have a few around the city over the next while as we're doing renos, that would probably be quite helpful. Okay, so all the questions have been answered. It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Folks, it's clear we're not going to get done by 11, so I'm going to need a motion. Counselor Singh, Counselor Iannidis, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to, sorry, committee reports. And we will start with Counselor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verban. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh that the report of the community and infrastructure service committee be adopted through items through one to 16, with 13 already being dealt with.
Thank you. Counselor Yonetski?
Yeah, regarding item number one of the committee reports, I am in support of the Belmont Village Music Festival that's going to be taking place that day. However, I do have some concern in regard to the music and the decibel level. I know we have had issues when we had music events at Binghamton Park, and there's a decibel level that, that's been set at 65. And it's Binghamton Park, and it's very much away from residential areas, at least a kilometer or whatever. In this particular case that is held in Belmont Village, there'd be a couple of stages that will be set up, and it's right beside the houses. I mean, we're talking just feet. And so with the music we'll be playing, I like to have a decibel level read, set that be no louder than 60 decibels from 10 o'clock to 7:00 PM, and then in the evening from 7:00 to 10:00, decibel reading be at 50 decibels. So I've written this out here for the, for the clerk as an, as an add-on to this particular item. Because otherwise, we're going to have lots of noise complaints because there's no limit set, the way it's written right now. I'm looking for a second or two.
Okay. First of all, I guess, is there a second or for the amendment? Seconded by Counselor Fernandez? Okay, Counselor Galloway, sorry? It would be an amendment. Counselor Galloway-Seelock, you have a question on this?
I have a question, I guess of staff. I don't know how familiar you are with the event that's going on, but is it even remotely comparable to the amplification that's happening in like, the festival or the, the events at Binghamton's? Or is it just a couple stage with a few speakers?
Through the, through the mayor, certainly not the same type of music that happened at Binghamton's with the Ever After Music Festival, so it's a completely different style. They do have rotating bands coming through throughout the day, anything from classic rock to jazz. I know there was extensive work done with this organization. They have canvassed the entire neighborhood and gone door to door and spoken to everybody individually, as well as left flyers with contact information if there is a problem. And it's, it's been endorsed by all of the businesses within Belmont Village supporting it as well. So the only other comment that I wanted to make is, we normally charge to have an officer available doing decibel readings during these events, and there's been no discussion with that. That's generally picked up by the promoter who runs the event. So we've had absolutely no discussion with them in terms of them funding an officer for the day.
And is this a for-profit group, or is this just a volunteer who's running this festival?
It's a volunteer, and it's been supported by the Belmont Village businesses that are there.
Right, okay. So I wouldn't see fit to charge him for an officer to be present. With those, I will not be able to support the amendment, but the, the recommendation for noise exemption.
I see, you're, you're here for that item, correct, sir? For the festival?
Yeah.
Oh, you're stretching, okay. So Counselors Davey and Singh, are you on this item? Okay, Counselor Davey?
Thank you, just, I might have missed it, but does clause B say that the music be no louder than 50 decibels between 7:00 and 10:00 PM?
That's correct.
Okay, and I'm curious where that figure came from. Why did they choose 50 decibels? Why did the counselor choose 50 decibels?
How did you pick these numbers?
Well, considering the decibel readings that were done for Binghamton, I thought that it'd be much lower, because we are really right near, I mean, we, about the residential area. I mean, you've got your commercial, and then right beside it is the residential. It's not like in Binghamton's where you've got hundreds and hundreds of yards, if not, you know, a kilometer, that your closest residential building is to, to that sound. Here, this is right beside it. And so if they're going to be playing them all day, and I know they've canvassed it, the BIA is prepared to support it, but I was on the BIA when we discussed this, and we says, well, we just hope the music is not that loud to affect the neighborhood. Well, they did go ahead and indicate that they'll be trying to keep the noise down. Well, one interpretation from what they play is being not loud, to what the resident here is two different opinions. So I thought by bringing some numbers out, and I reduced it because it's so much closer than what we have at Binghamton. So it's not anything scientific, it's just sort of common sense.
Counselor Singh?
Yeah, sorry, I'm not finished.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Davey?
Yeah, so I just, again, it's, I'm hung up on the numbers a little bit, because perhaps the counselor isn't aware that every time you reduce by 10...
the counselor isn't aware that every time you reduce by 10, it actually halves the volume. So when you're at 50 decibels, for example, just looking quickly, a quiet suburb is at 50 decibels, a library is at 40 decibels, for example. So 50 decibels is really no noise exemption at all. So I, obviously, I can't support that. The 60 decibel range, perhaps, for the entire evening is something that I would consider, but 50 decibels is, practically eliminates the point of a noise exemption.
Okay. Counselor Gazola, are you on this issue or another issue? Yeah, I will get to that. Counselor Janetski?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, and I can understand Mr. Counselor Davie's concern, but when we did with the Bright Up Park, and we had decibel readings of somewhere around 45, and then all of a sudden it goes sort of up, and here we have in the residential area that the ball diamond is still a little further away, we have an issue here where it's right beside it, and beside the residential here. So that's, I'm just letting you know, this is my concern from some of the residents who've mentioned it. So if you vote the other way, don't be surprised if you hear lots of feedback from the neighborhood.
Counselor Galloway-Silak.
Sorry, I just want to be clear. What decibel level requires a noise exemption? Like, do we have a level?
Through the mayor, we don't have a level for this type of music. Again, it falls under subjective noise. So if council were to set a level, that's what we would use as a guideline. What we did for Ever After was we did consultation with an acoustical engineering company who provided us what is considered a standard for concert-type events.
Right. And so the readings that you were getting out in the Chicopee area was under 65?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Singh, apologies.
No, no, that's okay, actually. Counselor Davie had been on the same website as me, and even 60 decibels says conversation or restaurant office background music or air conditioner unit. Just my issue is we can't throw arbitrary numbers on this one. I can appreciate where Counselor Janetski may be coming from. From what I'm hearing, I think the organizers are making every effort possible to be conscious of, obviously, the area residents. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that's correct, and I think this is just, this is no big bands that have all sorts of equipment that's sophisticated. I think they're just regular people that get together and play. I don't think the equipment that they're bringing is very sophisticated at all, but we certainly have contact information for the event organizer and a phone number, where if we start to get complaints, we could certainly reach out to them and work with them to bring that noise level down.
Yeah, thank you. And I think my only comment to this would be that we can't be too overly cautious. Again, we can react to this depending on how the outcome is, but we can't be limiting so that we don't even allow this type of activity happening in areas like Belmont Village, where I think this would be a good welcome.
Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, just to add to that, have we got confirmation from the organizers that they will, at all times, have someone available? Do we have a cell phone number at all times?
Through the mayor, we do, and that's something that we require when we do any of these noise exemptions, to have that contact person.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, perhaps the neighbors who are hearing the noise and weren't aware of the party going on might just walk down and enjoy it, and if it's not going to go past 10:00 p.m., then perhaps that will be acceptable as a one-time event. Is this on a school night? What night? I, sorry, I don't have it.
It's a Saturday, Friday or Saturday.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm just going to make a quick comment on this myself. I have met with the event organizer. This is a community event. I've heard, you know, members of councils say they don't want to just see special events in the downtown, they want to see them throughout the city. And now we have the Belmont Business Association, who's actually gone to a lot of trouble to consult, as staff have indicated, and as he indicated to me, to plan an event that's really designed primarily for that neighborhood, but others are going to be welcome to attend. And I think to put any, you know, unreasonable expectations on them, particularly in the first year, and particularly when they are not looking at having a, you know, big money-making concert, but in fact, a neighborhood event that's supposed to build neighborhood spirit, you know, I'm not prepared to support this amendment, because then, quite frankly, are we going to say no to every other single event and start setting these standards for every event in the downtown and everywhere else in the city? So I think we need to keep that in perspective. Number 14, Counselor Gazola. I'll come to the vote on this.
Are you done with everything else?
I guess, well, I was going to deal with them all. Okay, we can deal with this one now. We'll deal with number one's vote. So we'll deal with the amendment first. It's been moved and seconded. Recorded vote? Okay. Recorded vote for the amendment to number one. All those in favor? Those opposed? That's carried. Sorry, that's not carried, sorry. It's been a long day. So now we'll deal with the original motion for number one. Does people want to record a vote for that as well? No? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. We'll now deal with number 14, Counselor Gazola. If you can click in again. Go ahead.
Yeah, we did not take a vote on this last week, and I had asked for additional information. I'm still struggling to find what kind of changes there have been in the number of cyclists. I haven't seen any information with regards to that. We did get quite a bit of considerable information back from the department, giving us some changes in what's happened. Again, there really wasn't a great deal of before and after, and I'm hopeful, as we go down the road, that we'll have better statistics to see what's happening, but I'm not prepared to support this, because I really feel that the pendulum's swung too far. I don't, I don't see that this is broken, so I don't know why we should be, why we're fixing it. It was interesting to see the comments from staff that had indicated that between 2014 and right now, 2017, there had been 128 accidents or something on those streets, and not one of them involved a cyclist. So it, I mean, no one can argue, I won't, I'm not going to argue about the fact that we need to have respect and watch out for each other. I both am a driver and a cyclist, and I do both, and I, because of that, I think I respect both sides of the issue, but sometimes I think we're going too far on some of these issues. It's not a huge thing, although it's going to be a $15,000 expenditure to change this around, but I won't be supporting it, and I ask for a recorded vote on it.
Okay. Counselor Davie?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions on this, and I do appreciate staff's follow-up. The, looking at the numbers, I was, actually, I was quite surprised that a number of the recorded speeds that they saw, at least at the 85th percentile, were not only under 50 in some cases, in some cases, they were under 40. So in trying to establish the value here, can I ask what staff reasonably expects, like, I don't know, presented in a percentage form or kilometer form, how much they expect this initiative will actually reduce speeds?
Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you through you, the mayor. It's an excellent question, one that I don't have an answer for, in that every location's going to be different, and there's a significant number of factors that enter into the speeds that vehicles go on roadways, and for me to make an assumption on the impact of the speed reduction would not be appropriate. Having said that, we do have examples in the past. You recall last year, we implemented the school zone speed limit reduction from 50 kilometers to 40 kilometers per hour. I can report that through that review, we saw a reduction of 3.1 kilometers per hour in the 85th percentile speeds at the school locations. I also did further investigation today on other studies on the impacts of reducing, lowering speed limits, forgive me, and it falls right in line with our study outlined of 3.1, the typical reduction in speeds are 2 to 3 kilometers per hour. It is acknowledged that some of the locations were recommending these already have speeds that are not high. It's standard in the traffic engineering field to try to match the operating speeds on the road, excuse me, to match the speed limit to the operating speeds on the roadway. So in our mind, reflecting the fact that we are now asking different modes of traffic, travel to share the same space, we anticipate that vehicle speeds will further go down, recognizing sharing space with cyclists, but it also is a proactive approach to recognize what we have in place already for a lot of the locations.
Okay. Thank you. This might be equally difficult to answer, but part of the reason we have this is to reduce the damage caused in an accident. So assuming that we see similar reduction of 3.1 kilometers an hour, is that, would that, I've seen the difference in 10 kilometers an hour in terms of fatalities, does 3.1 kilometers per hour make a difference in terms of what we would see?
Through the mayor, an equally tough question. I'm not familiar with studies that can give numbers on that.
They kind of just go at 10-kilometer increments?
Typically, yes. But I will state, and I think I'm stating the obvious here, any efforts we can make to reduce speeds are going to reduce the severity of any collisions, whether it be with pedestrians, cyclists, or vehicles.
Okay. Last question. Was, does anyone, is anyone aware if the cycling committee was made aware either A of the speeds in the area that we do, the data that we do have, or B that in the recorded collisions we have, there was no incidences of a collision with a cyclist?
Through the mayor, the information presented to you since last Monday's committee meeting has not been shared. The update as far as the speeds and collisions, that we have not had an opportunity to go to our committee with that information.
Mr. Redman, you want to add something?
Through the mayor, I'd like to add, in addition to Ken's comments, we do have a number of instances of road rage that we've heard about along shero areas. So while the 85th percentile speeds are in line with what we're hoping to achieve at the 40 kilometers an hour, there are a number of negative interactions that have happened on some of our sheros. There was actually a collision between a cyclist and a car, which was related to road rage, on College just behind City Hall, where the car actually rammed the cyclist into a construction fence. So we're trying to really change those behaviors with part of this recommendation, along with trying to get compliance with shared use on the streets.
Okay. Thank you. If I could, just with 10 seconds, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I think I will support this. It was never my intention to, you know, I just was concerned that the cycling, I would never take money away from the cycling budget, it was their money to go back, but I do have a little bit of concern that it's not going to get the impact that I think the cycling committee is hoping for, but I will, I will support it regardless.
Okay. Counselor Janetski?
Yeah, thank you. I reviewed the report from Mr. Carmichael and looked at the statistics that he's provided for the variety of streets, and I don't think, I see, I mean, some streets don't have any data, others have, as I see, respectable travel times, travel speeds, within the 85% calculation. I mean, there are a couple that are higher than normal, but I am not too concerned based on what statistics have been provided. The one that really caught my eye, that I was surprised, but I'm happy to see, is that there's not been one cyclist that's been involved in any of the collisions. So I did point out back last time that, from my research on the internet, that the sheros are being downgraded in terms of the opinions from some scholars. As I mentioned, the engineering scholars from University of Colorado in Denver took a closer look and basically have analyzed that sheros are not the safest way of addressing the safety issues, and have not really done the need of addressing the problems. And that was noted in different basic items that were identified on the internet. You just can Google which one you want, and you can find the similar analysis on that. So based on that, I'm not going to be supporting that.
Counselor Singh?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I too have some reservations with this. I appreciate the comments that Mr. Redman, or the information that he was able to outline, but again, that was indicative of, you know, just really bad behavior by probably singular motorists, especially when it's to do with road rage. You know, we have these roadways that have the bicycle sheros on them, showing that the road is to be shared both by bicyclists and motor vehicles. The lowering of the speed, I don't know, I'm not really convinced it's going to make that much of a difference, especially the fact that all these roadways, Cedar, Cortland, Duke, East Ave, Joseph, King, Park, Queen Street, Water Street, they're all downtown streets where traffic congestion is bad enough that speeds are well below the 40 kilometers to begin with. It seems like exercise for the sake of an exercise, but the fact it's not going to do any harm, I'll support it, but it just, it's not overly convincing, though.
Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of points in support of this item. I, first of all, reflecting on the words of the delegate who appeared before us last week, clearly, any efforts we make to reduce the speeds will decrease the rate of injury for the cyclists or drivers, for that matter, who might be involved in future collisions. The statistics that we're referring to, where there were no cyclists involved in these collisions, are all, we have to remember that they're car-centered. I've been edged off the road multiple times by a car, and I can, as a cyclist, as many cyclists, can, we adapt and can avoid a collision here or there, but not always. And even when a person might be tapped by a car and off the road, it goes unreported. So we have to remember that these things happen all the time, and the number of cyclists in Kitchener will only increase as we make our cycling infrastructure more user-friendly. So I, as much as I, it sounds like around the horseshoe that we're going to hear, that we're hearing support for this, I want to reiterate that it's not just, oh, yeah, I guess it won't do any harm. It's actually important that we demonstrate where there are sheros on the road, that we ensure cyclists and drivers get the message that we need to go slower on these, in these areas, so that we can indeed properly share the road.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Bravon. I agree with Counselor Marsh. After hearing our delegation at committee, it became clear to me that this is very necessary. I think staff have done a great job at researching this and coming up with the locations. I think this is a great idea. I think we, as a city, need to make it known that we want everyone to be safe in traffic. And I know there's a comment made at committee that, you know, they saw a cyclist holding up traffic. Well, cyclists are traffic, too. We're all in this together, and I think this is a way to make sure that our streets, our roads are as safe as possible for all traffic.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat what my, the last two counselors said, but just really quickly, tonight we talked about changing behaviors around Bright Up Park. This is about changing behaviors. This is about making drivers acknowledge the fact that cyclists have a right to share the road, and if we reduce the speed, we reduce the conflicts, and we reduce the likelihood of serious injury to our cyclists. As a cyclist who rides all the time and all over the place, I have encountered road rage. As a cyclist who rides all the time and all over the place, I have encountered road rage, and it is not fun. And I'll tell you right now, if at least I knew that it would, in a 40-kilometer zone, I could ride safely without them right up my rear end, I would feel a lot safer. This may help change some of our behavior with residents who are riding on the sidewalks if they feel safer on our roads.
Okay, there isn't anyone else? Before I make my comment, I just want to ask Mr. Redman a question, and I know there's been reference to studies around sharrows. I presume staff have looked at this and looked at some of the professional feedback on sharrows as well. What have we learned? Wonder if Mr. Redman can comment on that?
Through the mayor, so all bike infrastructure is context-sensitive, so in our downtown, we have narrow road right-of-ways, we have limited space with all the competing priorities. It's also based on volumes and speeds of traffic, so if you have slower traffic and lower volumes, sharrows are a more appropriate mechanism. Some of the examples in the states have had sharrows being applied on inappropriate roadways.
In where, sorry?
Inappropriate roadways.
Oh, okay.
So if you look at like Fairway Road, for example, like some of those applications are actually just putting sharrows on the right-hand lane of a road like that. So those are definitely an inappropriate use of sharrows. Ideally, if we get to a place where we had protected bike lane network throughout the city, that is the best infrastructure overall, but we do have to look at the context of the roads we're dealing with and the traffic and volume considerations.
Okay, well, thank you for that perspective, and I will be supporting the recommendation that's before us. Do I think it's a panacea and a cure to all of the challenges that cyclists face on roadways? Absolutely not, but it is a step in the right direction in terms of dealing with issues of safety for both cyclists and pedestrians and vehicular traffic interacting on the roads in question. And, you know, anytime we can, we can take a step, and even if it is 3.1 kilometers that in the end may be the impact on this, it's a step in the right direction where, you know, potentially someone is, the risk of injury or fatality decreases because the speed has gone down. Ultimately, I think, as Mr. Redman just suggested, the, you know, we need to be working with our regional partners to address issues such as the need for protected bike, segregated protected bike lanes, and that ultimately ends up becoming, I think, the solution in a region like ours that we're going to have to, you know, come to terms with over the next number of years in response to requests from the cycling community and others. So with that, a recorded vote has been called on number 14. Those opposed? The motion carries. The balance of the report, those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Financing Corporate Services, Councilor Davy.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Dave Schneider, the three items from Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. PSI, Councilor Singh?
Thank you. The only item outlined under the Planning and Strategic Condition as Committee, which has been moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Galloway Seelock, is endorsed for approval.
Okay, a recorded vote has been requested for this one. Councilor Singh, you want to speak again, or? Oh, okay, that's fine. And then I see Councilor Gazola and others have now, okay, go ahead, Councilor Singh.
Yeah, I expected the members of council were going to probably make comments on this one. I wanted to make sure I make mine. Again, I see a good design as laid out by our staff and am supportive of it being endorsed and added to our city's urban design manual. We need to encourage this level of design as we, as we move out throughout the downtown and other areas of the city as well. But that's the point that I want to make sure that I touch on. When we have a higher standard of design, there are additional costs that come with it. It's good that we have some monies that have already been budgeted, whereas the unfunded operating is being referred to 2018 budget process, but again, the emphasis needs to be put on finding community partners that will share in the cost, because at the end of the day, the improvements to our streetscape are not only for the aesthetic pleasure of our citizens, it is also for the benefit of the businesses in that area, and they need to come to the table in some aspect in sharing costs through sponsorship or partnerships. And I'm hopeful that staff will encourage that process as we move forward to the 2018 budget deliberation, so that we, whatever the final number we're looking at, is minimized through some partnerships that are sought for and reducing the overall cost to the taxpayer.
Councilor Gazola?
Yeah, I want to start out by saying that what's being presented is a tremendous project, a beautiful thing, it'll, someday it'll be a good thing for our community. It really, the idea, the vision there is very good. However, it's ahead of its time. The project, the project basically is half short of the money that's required. It's about a $2 million project, and we have $850,000 set aside. So we're going to finance it by taking funds away from other projects that haven't been designated, and it, it's just, when we're going through a period where we have so many infrastructure problems facing us, and we've just had a turn down on the hopes of perhaps getting some money through an increase in the HST to help with our infrastructure problem, that's been turned down, and there's a lot of merit for turning it down, but the fact is, we have a lot of, a lot of higher priorities out there that we need to deal with, that even though this is, can be a good project, now's not the time. I don't think we have the funding for it. It was interesting to see that there is a candidate that's coming through, I think is with the American Hotel, has shown some images of what they plan to do there, and that's going to be a tremendous improvement. And when I questioned the, those, the company last week when they're here at committee, they stated that regardless of where the city goes on this, they're going to go ahead with their project. And I would like to see, before we start finding money to do projects like this, that we, that we have some commitment from outsiders. So with all our infrastructure problems, this is not the time, so I won't be supporting it.
Councilor Davy? Oh, sorry. That's fine. Okay, Councilor Davy?
Thank you. My concern was on a similar line, I think it's important to comment on it, because the media that came out of it was that the Queen Street plan was approved, which I don't think is really accurate to say at this point. I think it's a fantastic plan, and I really hope that it does, we do see that happening, but I think that there were a few members of council that said, we need some of the private sector businesses to come to the table and foot some of the bill, because it's not, I don't think it's practical, because we've come to the table as a city with a significant amount of money already. I don't think it's, it's practical to go without that additional funding. And it's not, I don't think it's an impossible ask either. I think there are entities like the BIA that can chip in, and even the business potential development that Councilor Gazola referenced, I asked them in committee if they would be interested in contributing towards this plan, and they were open to the idea. So I think the possibility is there. I just want to be 100% clear that we did not approve that plan in whole, and I fully expect to see, to be frank, I'm looking for hundreds of thousands of dollars in private sector support before I will approve this come budget time.
Councilor Anadis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Verbanovic, and yeah, I want to further enforce Councilor Davy's comments. I agree a lot with what he mentioned. My biggest concern is, I mean, this is a really great project, no doubt about it, and I would love to see it come to fruition, and, but my concern right now is, and I think it's a bigger project that has more of my attention, is dealing with Carl's Air Square, and I think that has a greater impact on what it would have on the community than what I think Queen Street will do at this point. And, but I'm willing to support this, because it's just, it's just to look at it at budget time in a greater context.
Councilor Fernandez?
We had broken this out into two pieces at committee, and I'd like to do the same, so that the first two paragraphs were voted on, and then the last paragraph voted on.
Okay, Councilor Galloway Seelock?
Yeah, I quickly just wanted to comment that we are endorsing what I see here as the city's urban design manual for Queen Street placemaking plan. We're endorsing it. So I agree that we are saying yes to the overall plan, but we don't currently have the full funding mechanism, and that's what the second paragraph really outlines, is the operating and capital costs will come back to the budget process. So I think I understand what some of my colleagues are saying, but we are approving or endorsing the overall plan, it's just, we don't currently have the funding for it all. And I agree that we need to continue to look for private sector funding and partnerships with this regards, because I do think that there's a lot of great features, and I think that we can do it over time. It's definitely one of those projects that can be broken out and do pieces at a time. So I mentioned in committee that we always challenge staff to look at the big picture, and they came to us with a very comprehensive plan that we need to continue to move forward, and that it's a great document that staff are committed to implement, and I think that it will definitely enhance our downtown. So I will support the recommendations.
Okay, there aren't any further comments, I'll just briefly make mine. I think I made most of mine at committee last week, but I will be supporting this. I think we often talk about the kind of city we want to build for all our citizens and the importance of placemaking in terms of economic development and creating the kind of places where our citizens want to be. If we truly are building a city for the future, then these kinds of investments are as important as looking after our existing infrastructure is. It's not either or, it's taking a measured approach in terms of both components. I think it is important to set this as a guide in terms of our urban design manual, and we'll deal with the costs associated with it. I do sincerely hope that the BIA will come forward in a significant way as a, as a funding partner for this, and I hope that some of the others along Queen Street and so on will consider investing in this as much as, as, you know, we're looking at it from a city perspective. It is important, and we did not do all of it when we did King Street. We recognized some components of it, we're going to come forward later on, because we didn't have all the money then, and this is the first of those components coming forward now, and we're going to have to look at the other side streets, and quite frankly, we're also going to need to look at King Street from Frederick down to Madison at some point in the future as well. We knew that back then, and that still remains the case today. So a recorded vote has been requested, and I've been asked to deal with paragraphs one and two first, so we'll deal with those first. All those opposed? That motion is carried, and we'll deal with the third paragraph. Move on to Audit Committee. Councilor Davy, if you can bring that forward for me?
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Frank Etherington, that the 2016 audited consolidated financial statements of the city of Kitchener be approved.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Heritage Kitchener, Councilor Gazola?
Yeah, there are two motions coming forward from the Heritage Committee, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Singh, and just briefly, they both deal with heritage permit applications that have been made to make changes to properties. The first one is, is in the Heritage, Victoria Park Heritage District, it's at, it's at Ford Park Street, and there's a request to add a garage to that property, and that was approved by the Heritage Committee. The second one deals with, again, a heritage permit application, dealing with 330 Joseph Shirck Crescent. It actually is the old Shirck Homestead that is finally, work is beginning to, to save the property and to bring it back to hopefully prominence again, and this recommendation again was approved by the Heritage Committee.
Okay, thank you for moving and seconding that. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Unfinished business? New business, Councilor Anadis?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I do have a revised version that I want to put up for the clerk. Yeah, I'll just read the motion out, so it's, I'm going to read it out there.
Good. Can you adjust it, please? Thank you, Mr. One.
Whereas city councils approve, the committee grants policy review process and assessment framework that is used to evaluate grant applications received by the city, and whereas the city's standard process of allowing grant applications to appeal decisions made on their submissions to city council has a potential bracket real or perceived politicized grant applications. Therefore, be it resolved that no community grant Tier 1 and 2, Tier 2 appeals will be heard by city council in 2018, and that for 2018, any appeals be delegated for consideration by the CAO, Deputy CAO of Community Services, and the Executive Director of CAO. And further, that staff report back in late 2018 on the effectiveness of this delegation for possible permanent consideration.
Is there a seconder? Second to Councilor Singh. Do you want to make any comments, Councilor Anadis, as the mover?
Yeah, I just, the comments is, it's been a concern of mine for many, many years now, and I've noticed a pattern, and, you know, we strive to be physically responsible, but at the same time, we do delegate this to, to our staff to look at this, and I feel that community groups are getting a clue on whether or not if they appeal, that we will grant them the money if they appeal. And I feel strongly too, that I think that they even stack their grants more than what they want, so that we even appeal, and that they would get more money. So I, and I, and I, I want to, I want to be, I want to be more transparent in that, and I want, and I want us to depoliticize in particular in the, in certain years in the future. So I think this would be a good practice to move forward, but I mean, again, let's see how it goes, baby step, and I know... Baby step. And I know from just in communicating with staff, in the last nine years, we've gone over just close to like over $140,000 worth of dollars. And granted, these organizations, they all need dollars, but, I mean, $140,000 over that timeframe, I could think of that money that could be spent for other dire needs that would be useful, in my opinion. And I find that we go over, when we go through budget, when we purposely are going over budget for this. And to me, I don't think it's a great practice.
Counselor Fernandez?
This is a little bit disturbing for me, because I think that community organizations come here to plead their case. I don't think they always expect that they're going to get money. And I don't think it's a political situation. I think it's them really trying to appeal to the entire council and make their case. Sometimes they're given nothing. Sometimes they're only given, you know, 1%, which turns out to be $50 or $75. So I can't support this at this time. I think we have to, this is sort of coming out of left field. I mean, when are we going to let these organizations know that they can't come to council? You know, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, community grants is one of the first things we talk about as we go through budget process. First, it's user fees, and community grants come shortly afterwards. So, that's all.
Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, I just have some questions about this motion. I'm just, I can see where Counselor Ionitis is coming from, not wanting to make it too political, but I'm wondering, with what criteria would we delegate authority to grant appeals? I mean, typically, the amount of money that is put aside for Tier One and Tier Two grants is all used up when staff recommend who gets what. And so then, with what fund would this small group decide, you know, to spend additional money on if they found it worthy? So I guess that's a question for Ionitis or Counselor Ionitis, or if there is a staff person that might want to answer, I'm not sure.
Counselor Ionitis?
That's the point. They already do the work. They already delegate on the spending and all that stuff. So for them to exercise this, I think they're in the best position. They're the ones that are dealing with the application. They're the ones that know. So I think this is just one other level to depoliticize this when it's that time of the year.
Yeah, but I-
Mr. May, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to say that from staff's perspective, likely how we would handle this is we would go back to those documents that council's already approved and referenced in the earlier part of the motion, the assessment framework and the evaluation policy, and look to see if we can find any errors in judgment that it may have been made the first time around. So it's almost like a second set of eyes. But I would say we would put a process around it internally with some criteria.
And what budget would the additional monies come from? I guess we'd have to decide that at a later date, if we don't decide now.
Yeah, I mean, through you, Mr. Chair, for the most part, you've basically been approving appeals and then just agreeing it was an over expenditure. So that's the history. I'm not suggesting that's what we would do, but that's what's been happening to date.
We'd have to just direct staff on how to handle those things, I guess. But then would we have an upper limit of how much to allow? I guess what I would want to avoid is for staff to say, okay, well, here's our Tier One and Tier Two budget, so let's hold back some and deny more than we would normally, anticipating that we're going to have to use some of that money for potential appeals. I just think that it's cleaner when we have a budget that can be used for community grants, and then staff are directed to utilize that fund as much as they see fit in the first round. Just my two cents.
Okay. Counselor Janetzky?
Yeah, question to staff. Over the last many decades prior to election year, have we had an issue on this type of item?
Okay, at this point, I don't think we're talking about election year anymore, Counselor. Janetzky, if you look at the motion that's on the screen in front of you, that's been taken out of the motion.
I'm missing something here. What's been taken out?
There's no, look on the screen. There is no reference to election year in the motion.
No, I know.
In other words, he's-
But when you got 2018, that implies-
No, the motion, as reads Counselor Janetzky, is that this is, that this process be proposed as a way of removing any potential politicization, and that it be done in 2018 on a trial basis, and that staff then report back for possible permanent consideration of the delegation.
Okay, I see where you're coming from, but I'm reading between the lines, and I don't see this as an issue at all. I mean, these groups come in, and they come as groups. So they make their point, because they need some money. We support them or we don't. Period.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Singh?
Yeah, like Counselor Marsh, I do also appreciate, you know, where Counselor Ionitis is coming from. I can understand his endeavor to, you know, depoliticize the grant application process. But at the end of the day, I think, you know, our community groups do cherish that opportunity to be able to make their case in front of those that are elected to serve to their benefit. But that's not to say that we can't have a policy debate or look at a different approach. In the past years, I have, you know, seen aspects of dysfunction in, you know, in the way we, you know, on the whim, approve certain applications. I think especially when some solace and thought needs to be put in place. But again, they are before us, and we make kind of decisions on the fly. So I'm not saying the system is perfect. I think I appreciate, you know, aspects of the community members being able to come before us, but at the same time, I think there could be improvements made. So I'm willing to entertain a trial of this, and I'm seeing the motion as such. But my concern also lies, as Counselor Marsh has already said, you know, if we're not going to, you know, set a certain discretionary amount for staff to look at this, then, you know, I'm not sure what we're asking for a delegated authority. Staff always show good judgment. I'm not saying council doesn't, but we take many things into consideration. And they will see that if they will approve applications based on the budget before them, and they will find it very difficult, in my assumption, to approve beyond what the budget is and to go into deficit accounts. I would be willing to support this if Counselor Ionitis was willing to perhaps set a discretionary amount. I'm just throwing a number out there. It's meaningless, but I'm, you know, 30, 40,000. Typically, every year, that we tend to go beyond what the budget is. It may be less than that. Again, as I said, it may be something that needs to be debated. But just giving authority to staff just to say no on an application that has already been declined, I think it doesn't, it's not delegated authority. It's just saying it's better someone else says no rather than us. I think it needs to carry on that effort to have a second set of eyes that can really look beyond what the policy is, and seeing, okay, you know what, this group is, really needs to have that additional help this one extra year. Okay, we're going to go ahead and approve this slight amount. They need to have that authority to make that discretion by putting aside that additional budget. So I will look to Counselor Ionitis to see if he's able to provide a more clarification on what that amount would be satisfactory. If he sees fit, I would see myself perhaps supporting it.
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I'm not sure what to say. I don't see any merit in this whatsoever. It's obviously, it's, the intent of the mover here was to have something to say about political advantage in election years. That's obviously what's behind it. I see no merit in it. Quite frankly, where does it stop? 2018 is what it is. Are we going to have staff making all of the decisions that we're going to face next year? If not, if that's the way, why do we need a council? We're here. We're elected for this purpose. That grant process, that grant process has been streamlined tremendously over the past 20, 25 years. And I think it works very well. At the end of the process, all of the little organizations out there like to have an opportunity to come and present their case to the council of the day. And it does take a little bit of work on our part. Whenever we have to deal with it, a tremendous amount of background is provided by staff, so their information is all there. And in a lot of cases, there is merit, there is merit for different reasons. There's merit to change what has been approved by the committee, that's been set up. So, to me, this is just the start of what they call a silly season, but I've never seen it start this early before. I won't be supporting this motion.
Counselor Davies?
Thank you. I may come as no surprise, but I will be supporting the motion. I guess, I don't know, I see it from a completely different lens, and that is, yes, some groups cherish coming before counselor committee to make their case outside of the confines of the regular process. The regular process is to submit your application after we set a budget on how much money we want to distribute to the community through our grant process. And what ends up happening oftentimes, I believe, is that you'll have situations where applications are not complete when they're submitted. They don't do as good a job, explain themselves as other applicants. And then they come back after the fact and are allowed to add extra criteria that other groups did not get. So we have some groups that accept it and don't bother coming towards, coming to council to plead their case, because they accept the rules and the criteria that everyone was judged by fairly. And you have other groups that come and don't accept it, and we only hear those ones. And the problem, the biggest problem I have with it is we tend, more often than not, to give those groups money. So it's no surprise that over the years, we see more and more delegates coming before council and committee to ask for more money, because they know if they do, there's a very, very good chance that we're going to give them more money. And worst-case scenario is, we're going to say no. So if we want to change the process so that we have to deal with every single grant application that comes towards us, then let's have that conversation. Otherwise, we need to delegate it. We need to respect the committee that makes the decisions and is staying, is putting in tons of hours to assess their criteria. Because if we're not respecting that process, then I'm not sure why we just don't go and look at every single one of them.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you Mayor Verbanovic. I see what's being asked here as a pilot project. And I echo much of what Counselor Davies said. We have a committee, and there are criteria that have to be checked to justify or deny funding. It is a level playing field. The application process is the same for everybody. And we have charged this committee with going through the applications, judging it against the criteria that's been set up for them, and letting them make the decision. So I see this as a pilot project worth having a look at.
Counselor Gallois-Cilock?
Yeah, a lot of my comments have already been made. If I can have just a quick, quick question of staff. Do you have any idea of the amount of time that is spent by the committee in order to make their recommendations approximately, if you don't have the number?
Mr. Van?
Between reviewing and in their committee meetings?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I don't have that. It is in every single annual report. I didn't bring it with me. For some reason, the number of 19 hours per member sticks out to me. But since I have the mic, I should clarify that there are two committees. There's the Citizens and Staff Committee that reviews the Tier Two grants, and that's the one that spends 19 hours. And then there's a Committee of Staff that reviews the Tier One grants. So just to be totally clear.
Okay, perfect. So I can support this, A, because it's a pilot project, and B, because there's so many times where we just give the money. And sometimes it's a token and not even necessarily enough to get them to what they need to. But, you know, here's 100 bucks, because you came to us. And we're really getting that reputation that if you appeal, you're going to get something. And that's concerning to me. We have tasked a committee that spends numerous hours to review and base their decisions on a criteria that we set. We set that criteria. So if we have a problem with the criteria, or we don't think people are getting the appropriate funding, then we need to look at the criteria and change the criteria that they're going to be evaluated against. I would caution setting any amount to an overage, because that would come into the concern of Counselor Marsh, like only give out $100,000, knowing that you're going to keep 30 in the pot for anybody who comes to appeal. So they're just going to come to appeal to get the extra $30,000. Right? And that decision would have to be made publicly. So I don't think that that's the best. You know, over all the years we've done this, like Counselor Ionitis has said, nine years, we've overspent $140,000. That's significant. And we just say to staff, that's an overage. Find the money. So I think having a second set of eyes is good, and that can be an appeal mechanism. However, they also have to base it on, we're going to have to tell council we have an overage, or we're going to have to work it out within our existing budgets. And so they'll take that extra serious. But I don't think we can give an amount, because that, I think, defeats the whole entire process. So I will support this. I'm interested to see what happens. I am interested to see what the user groups and the grant applicants say about this. But I think it really does level the playing field for those, for everyone. You're all going to be judged on the exact same criteria.
Before I go to a second round, I'm just going to make my quick comment. And I also want to remind people that we're into the final 13 minutes, or we're going to need to waive procedure and to continue past midnight. Well, yeah, so I will support the motion as it's written right now. I wasn't prepared to support it in its original wording, because I don't think there is anything different about an election year from any other year. Because otherwise, if you accept that argument, then why do we make any decisions in an election year? However, I think there is an argument to be made about depoliticizing the grant process. And I think if we look at this as a trial for a year, I'm willing to do that. I don't think we need to set an amount either. I think, quite frankly, if the committee, if the Staff Committee that would consider any appeals ultimately needs to come forward with a recommendation for council to consider any, they'll say, here's a list of the ones that we're recommending within budget. Here's the ones that we considered within appeal, you know, through the appeal process, and we think council should approve those. And then it'll be up to council to allocate the dollars for that, is the way I see it playing out. Counselor Marsh, you were next, and then Counselor Singh.
I want to be able to support this motion, but I want to just get a sense from staff if there are any concerns on the side of staff about this motion.
Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't think there are any concerns other than fleshing out some of the, you know, background procedural questions that are being debated here in terms of process, how we would communicate it. But there are no major concerns with the-
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Singh?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that Mr. May has said that was part of my concern, that they have no issue with this. And just clarity on, I like the way, Mr. Mayor, that you've outlined what the process would be. I want to confirm that that truly would be the case, that it really would be a real appeal process, where reconsideration could be given, if obviously having a second set of eyes looking through this, especially if the merit is there, that staff would just bring back a report saying that's what the recommendation is, and that council would approve.
Mr. May?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, this is not my motion. I think it's a better question for Counselor Ionitis, because to be honest, what will happen is, we'll bring a report forward, and at that point, all of those delegations which you tried to stop appealing to you will appear as delegations before council and make the same appeal that they would have made before.
Yeah, well, they would have made, they would, oh, yeah, that's right.
Right? Because of the public staff. Right, because of, because of the public staff report.
Okay, so, so this is, and this is where my confusion lies a little bit, and to help me clarify. I like the aspect of a second set of eyes and that's where council has tried to do, maybe not in its best effort. Uh, but if we lay out a budget for tier one, tier two through the committee, that's already expended. Um, so where does a second set of eyes comes, even if, you know, there is appeal process and through delegated authority, staff member looks at this and says, okay, no, this uh, this group does merit an increase or different amount, but there's no budget for it. So how would staff handle that? So I'm asking, so the part of the recommendation is any appeals be delegated. So is there an avenue for an appeal or not really?
Uh-
Because, because the motion doesn't address the overage.
Yes, so um, personally, I'm not as worried about it, but I understand some counselors are. Um, uh, these are part of the, the details and processes that we have to flesh out. My immediate thinking is your suggestion of an approved overage is a potential solution. I would set the limit based on some of council's approval at only twenty thousand. I, I actually fear setting too high of a limit would send a wrong signal. So if you're going to take that approach, uh, you know, fifteen thousand, based on previous experience, much lower than thirty, I don't have a better solution for you. So if, if, you know, it's the will of council to take that approach, then they could appeal and, and, and we'd have that flexibility.
So, Mr. Mayor, based on that response, I think, you know, if the motion is directing for it to be a secondary appeal process or appeal process, then it really needs to be that case. And in past practices, and there has been an avenue for user groups to be able to, to, to make a case, we need to carry that, through that as the motion outlines and staff need to have a very, uh, more clear uh, direction. Um, so I, I would amend um, an amount as Mr. May just, through two, fifteen or twenty thousand, I would go with a lower amount, seeing how the trial project goes and then having that discussion of the policy in later years and seeing if there needs to be a further improvement or a change, but there needs to be better direction to staff. So my amendment would be that they have that overage amount of fifteen thousand if there are appeals made and there is merit.
Is there a seconder for an amount? I don't see a seconder for an amount.
All right.
Okay, so the, the original motion has been moved and seconded. Uh, take a vote. All those in favor? Recorded vote, okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Um, gonna need a motion to, okay, moved by Counselor Fernandez, seconder to waive uh, the procedural bylaw. I need a seconder. Counselor Davy, all those in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose? That's carried. That doesn't need to be unanimous. Um, I think that's the only motion I need. Or now, is there a second motion I need? I thought it was seventy-five percent. Counselor Gazola, do you want to? Okay, can't, thank you. All, that's carried unanimously. Uh, so we're almost there, guys. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Uh, questions and answers? Yeah, one is, one is last, we're just gonna stay here forever and ever and ever. Um, okay, questions and answers none, so it's, uh, been moved by Counselor Galloway, see luck, seconded by Counselor Singh, that leave be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda. Uh, and there are additional bylaws, including the CAO one, correct? We've done that, okay. Uh, so then there are any additional ones? Um, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Janetski, the council resolved itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Janetski?
Yeah, thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Ionitis, the proceedings and the recorded-
No, 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 not, no, you're, you're too, too far ahead. You gotta deal with number two first, second reading.
I'm trying to make it by midnight.
Yeah.
Okay, item number one tenders, we've already dealt with all of them.
No, you gotta set second reading first, Counselor.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Didn't say that here. Uh, have a motion for a second, uh, second reading. Counselor Marsh, seconded by Counselor Schneider. Alls in favor? Opposed? Carried?
And you don't need seconders for this, Counselor Janetski?
Oh, okay. Okay, moved by Counselor Fernandez, item number two, dealing with the Royce Bingman request. Any discussion?
Counselor Davy has a question?
Yep, Counselor Davy?
See, didn't want to keep Ms. McNeil here for no reason. Uh, just, uh, one quick question. I, I don't recall concerns from this event from last year. Did this event occur last year is my only question.
Through the mayor, yes, it did. So uh, we did, we did have this event last year. There were no complaints. Uh, we did make some adjustments last year in regards to complaints we received the year before and they were quite successful.
Okay, good work. Thank you. No concerns. Thank you.
Any other que, discussion, questions? Um, I, I'd like a recorded vote on number two on this item. Alls in favor? And opposed? That's carried.
I move number three.
Yeah, committee of adjustment items, there's I think five or six of them here. I guess we deal with them as a whole unless anybody's got any issue, uh, need a mover?
I moved it.
Oh, sorry, didn't catch that. Thank you. Moved by the mayor. Any discussion on any of them? Alls in favor? Opposed? They're all carried. Okay, item number four. There's four here. Okay, item number four, Counselor Gazola?
I, I just, we're, we're accommodating something here and there were a lot of good reasons for doing it. I'm just wondering if we're gonna save any money on it. Is it uh, is it because of what we're doing, is it gonna be less than that, that, that amount of money that, I, I don't... You gave so many good reasons for going along with this, so now, is, are there any cost savings?
Mr. Redman wants to reply.
Through the chair. Um, so we did receive a fairly favorable quote on, on the work. Um, it does reduce conflicts in the future, so we should see savings through future phases of work as well.
Okay, it would be nice if you could sort of be a little more definitive as we go down the road. I, I don't want to take the money away from the center of the square or anything like that, but if we do make this change, there's, there's always two sides to the story, so I'd like to hear the other side.
Do I have a mover for this item?
I moved it.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Gazola, moved it. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Uh, items number five and six are for information purposes. Moved at the committee horizon report. All, alls in favor? Or is there any questions?
No, go ahead.
So alls in favor? Opposed? Carried? Am I gonna read this one here?
Now you use your line.
Okay. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Ionitis, that the proceedings and recorded disciplinary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date as attached hereto and forming part of these minutes be and the same are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Been moved by Counselor Galloway, see luck, seconded by Counselor Singh, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. I was gonna take a motion that we don't allow Jeff to retire and then we, no, just kidding. Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried.